Hi, it's public hearing to order. It's April 7, 2016 at 7:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is... So, here we go. Prayer and pledge. Checking up. The purpose of the public hearing is for the citizens' comments. Bill 2016-04.
Orders number 918, owners change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee located off Cox Pike home lot Billy Pomeroy and Robert Pomeroy Jr. Has shown a leased county map, tax map, 43 parcel 32.04, two acres. And map 21 parcel 61.06, 40.69 acres. And map 021 MA parcel 37.01, one half acre from RS 20 to RS 25, total acre.
Okay, thank you. This is an opportunity for any citizens in the community to come up and express any opinions or thoughts about the rezoning of this property. So if you do want to speak, please come up to the mic. Go ahead. We'll just... Everybody will get a chance at once to.
Hi. We're the Israels and we live on Dice Lampley Road. And this new subdivision is going to back up right on our farm. The 22 acres, the whole complete back. And our concern is the roads. Can it carry all of this traffic? Dice Lampley right now is so heavily trafficked, you know, and it just can't carry no more with that small bridge. And then we're concerned about, is there going to be any runoff on our property? And here we see that there is no creeks listed. There are two creeks.
Mayor, if I could...
Yeah.
Excuse me, ma'am. We're talking about the property that backs up to Poston Place. Is that correct?
Right.
This does not back up to Dice Lampley.
No, our farm is on Dice Lampley.
On Dice Lampley, on the north side, going towards 96?
Uh, going toward northwest.
Okay.
It's this, oh, right here. It backs up to our farm, our back pasture.
And there is a creek, but the map says it's not?
There is a creek here. And there's a creek, let's see.
Has the engineer seen this?
Here is our property, right here. Here is a creek here, and there is a creek here. It's not listed.
Somebody has to have it there. If the creeks are there and they're not on the map.
We just don't want any runoffs.
Yeah.
You know, on our farm.
I don't blame you.
We don't know what is going to be in this corner here where our property is and right here where our property is. Because this is where that one creek runs down the backside of it. And then the other creek is where our cows go into. And we just don't want any runoffs. Because we do understand that the sewage capacity is almost run out in Fairview. And we do understand that Poston Place is going to, and other ones, if they build, they are going to have to come up with their own systems. So are they going to be putting those systems back there where our pasture is or near those two creeks? That was our concern.
Okay, thank you. I... Would you like the engineer to come up and answer any questions right now?
I believe so, because it would set my mind at ease as well. And I know they want to get an answer to it.
Okay, if you don't mind, please join us.
Daniel Woods with the Addison Group, Lanskaire Architecture Firm, representing the owner. Right now, this is a concept stage, obviously. The creeks are shown on there, although not labeled. There's a creek that runs through that center median where you see the tree line. That's intended to be kept and preserved as it is now. And also, there is a creek that runs along the north side of the property. Both of those are intended to be maintained as well as the tree lines around it. So we're kind of treating that as the amenity in the community. Although the storm drainage has obviously not been drained... Not been designed yet. The goal will be to do a pre and post analysis that makes sure that we are not causing any additional runoff from the site. And that's a requirement by the state as well. But as of right now, the creeks are probably the... Our main amenity of this project. So we're doing everything we can to preserve it and obviously be very conscious of the water before it gets to it.
Okay, thank you.
Where is the... To answer her question, where is the drip field in relation to the creeks? I think there's a map, I think, right here. I don't have it in front of me. Can you show us where we're...
There's been green space set aside, but again, since it's... We're at concept stage. The step system has not been designed yet. We've allocated a certain amount of acreage so that we can make sure that we can accommodate those fields. But the engineers are going to have to tell us exactly where those go.
Well, where are those spaces in relation to the creeks that she's talking about?
Right now, there's open spaces on sort of the outskirts of the property. We're not intending to put any of the step systems. If you'll see that, sort of that center line that runs up through the median, that's the existing creek that comes through the property. And the darker line around it is the tree line that we're planning to preserve. At this stage, the goal is to not have any step or drip fields in that area. It's just too close to the creek and it would require some grading and removing of trees, which is not what we want to do. Most of the open spaces that would contain drip fields are intended to be more on the backside of those houses. So you'll see an open space on the west side. You see an open space at the very north. There's a center green. We're anticipating that there would be drip fields there. And as you go further north in the very top northwest corner, they're anticipating that there's drip fields there. And then back at the orange... The entrance off of Cox Pike. So generally, we've allocated some open space acres to accommodate that. But the engineers are going to tell us where those need to be, how much acreage is needed, and what we need to do.
Hang on, excuse me. We can't hear. If y'all can keep it down, please. Go ahead.
So the engineers are going to... That actually designed the step system are after going to tell us how much acreage we need to actually accommodate this, where those drip fields need to be, how far apart they need to be from each other. So right now, we've just generally allocated land for that.
So the creek is what's running up this area there in the middle?
Yes, sir. It runs up, and then it actually bends and turns to the left. You can kind of see where it starts to head off. And it actually forks there.
And then, so you... Between the creek and drip fields, you would have the green space in the median areas you described it. And then you would also have homes in between that as well. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And where, ma'am, is your property in relation to... On this map? So I'll see it.
Sure.
Absolutely. Give us something to point. Ma'am, ma'am.
Yeah, you can point right here.
Ma'am, ma'am. It'd be easier for you to point right there.
Point off the map there.
That's okay. We'll be able to follow a little bit better. It's okay.
Right here, that is the corner of our property too. Now, going down to... To the left of that, there is a creek going down. And it runs off into the... There's some people that live down in that hollow. And that creek goes down through there. And then on this side, right here, our creek goes down. Also, that's where our cows, uh, they graze down there. So, you know, I want to know where that septic is going. Because there is a spring on our property. That's where our pond stays.
Over here, to the left.
Can you... Can you come over here, ma'am?
Miss Hesron.
Which is her property?
That's... I'm going to get it to Shelby right here. Which one is your property though? You here or here?
Right.
It kind of curves around, like it starts there, goes around.
Like it's on three sides. All right, so this is you right here.
This is the home right here. And right back in here, this corner right here.
Through those woods?
Through those woods. And there's a house just in there in that hollow. And then what you hear is the other creek. And that's where... And there's a spring.
Mr. Engineer. Come up to his map.
Sure.
And show us where you... Where this little area jets out down here? Show us where you have drip fields possibly located.
Right here. Right here.
Nothing down on this bottom corner?
I can't imagine there would be enough space for that. And the other, to her point too. If there was a rip or septic field there, we'd have to... Obviously, we can't contain them within our own property. We couldn't have any possibility of any... So the engineers would have to tell us that. But as far as right now, it's just this face.
And that would have to have TDEC's approval?
Correct. State too. Yes, and water authority.
Yes, go on.
I live next door to her. And, you know, all these drip fields and whatever you're putting... Wanting to put in there. What does that do to our groundwater? Not just the creeks, but our groundwater? Because a lot of people over there have wells. And so if this gets in their wells, they're contaminated. So what are they supposed to do? I mean, it's real simple. You know, we live in the county, which but ties right into the city. Are you going to stop all that contamination right there at that point? You can't. It's going to come our way. So what I want to know is, how are you going to control it? How can you stand there and tell me that you won't contaminate my groundwater?
Pretty good question.
Well, one of the things with the step system, and which we can do another workshop where our engineer comes in and explains, because he's worked with Rutherford County and several other, and we'll probably get somebody from Dixon Water. But how it's done is it's completely... It's cleaned before it's ever released. So how it... There's so many steps. It's kind of a system. And before it's released, it's ultraviolet raised. And now granted, I'm not going to drink it, and I doubt you would want either. But they say what's being released is clean. But it's released into the ground. It's not a sprinkle where it's absorbed into the ground. It actually goes into the ground.
Right. But I'm saying, our groundwater comes in the ground.
Yeah, I agree.
It comes right through natural springs under the ground. Anything goes in that ground is going to hit that groundwater.
Yeah.
I mean, if you go down CCC Road to that supposedly, you know, safe environment, all that water coming out of there is safe, but you look at the creeks, you smell the smell? I mean, what somebody...
Oh, I don't think it's not the same.
What somebody tells us is safe. Just because somebody says it's safe, does he want to come drink my water after it's done?
Well, I swim in the Tennessee River, and we could go there too. I mean, basically, you know, we go boating. Everything's being discharged into water. The key is where we get... Problem is whether or not it's properly been cleaned and treated. And it's the same concept as that. And the ideal is it's clean when it's absorbed. And it's going through process. Now, I would love, and I know somebody can give a better answer than I just gave, but, you know, we've had to go several...
Well, I mean, that's all sounds well and good, but it sounds to me like somebody's just trying to push something to sell a bunch of houses. You know, and that's what it all boils down to. How badly do we want these houses next to us? You know, if it's going to... If it affects our way of life one little bit, it affects us.
Well, this is really... I mean, I know it's hard to kind of stomach when especially you think it's my property, and I hear you. But this is TDEC's approved system. This is the way they're going to. I mean, we can't say it will always be the same as it's always been. This is what they're pushing. So if it's wrong, then not to say the state's going to always get something right. Don't mislead me. Or don't let me try to feel like that I'm misleading you. But it's more... This is really a lot of other cities are doing it. It's not because, you know, it's just what they're pushing. So go ahead, Mr. Hall has something.
Thank you, Mayor. You've done a good job. One thing I'd like to mention, we have actually toured two huge developments in Rutherford County. And of course, one of the things that we were all concerned about was odor. We actually did not see any... Smell any odor at those particular places. The drip field itself turns into being a hay field, which they give to local farmers to cut the hay if they want to do so. But it's clearly maintained. It's fenced off to keep the public out so that these tubes that are underground, so that they won't be, you know, dug up or anything of that nature. But one subdivision was a 400-lot subdivision, and another one was a 200-lot subdivision. And we do have a tape on the construction and the process that this is done. So I think what's probably the best sometimes, Mayor, is if we can set up an evening where we can let them come in and view that tape, I think would, you know, help the situation as far as mentally. And we all have the same concerns ourselves, you know, so... But the water is treated, and all the solids are pumped out of a septic tank. Doesn't have anything to do going through. It's just the water that's treated off of it, the affluent. And so from what we've seen at the tours we've made, we did not smell any odor or anything.
Well, and, you know, the other thing you need to consider is it is constantly monitored by TDEC and Dixon Water Authority. So it's their responsibility if the system's not working correctly. You know, each builder is having to hire a TDEC-approved engineer to be able to put, and it's being monitored as the system's put in. But I think we... I had a hard time with this in the beginning. I really did. So I really tried to educate myself the best I could and go... We went to other communities, you know. There's a lot of stuff available. We had TDEC here at City Hall. I had about three of their top officials. Because me personally, we sold our water to Dixon 10 years ago. I just wanted them to provide what the contract said they would provide. But from what we got from it and what I took away is basically, this is what is becoming the approved system and what they want. I understand you have concerns, and I think the best thing is probably just get some of these people in a room with y'all and let y'all ask the questions and maybe get this video. And it would help maybe ease, you know, some of the questions that I probably can't answer. Do you have anything you want to add as I'll get back to you?
No, I was going to reiterate what you said. So I'm not an expert in the step systems. That's why we have an engineer that's qualified, that's certified by the state, that can do that work. But there is a series of checks and balances in order to do a step system. And just like you said, there's an initial design that has to be approved. But there's also a maintenance program that has to be approved and an authority that has to come in and make sure that that system is operating properly on a monthly and daily basis. So it's a process that... It's not new technology by any means. Like Mr. Hall said, it's... There are multiple projects that are already underway or finished in the middle Tennessee and in the greater parts of Tennessee using this same system. And it's a way to help cities that are having tap issues or are not being overburdened by the infrastructure problems. So it's a system that's been proven, and obviously, we would have to follow the same rules and guidelines as anybody else.
Thank you. Commissioner Crutcher, did you have a question?
Well, thank you. I was just going to say, I'm going to echo some of what Mayor Carroll has said. And certainly, we appreciate everybody being here tonight to speak on this issue. And we... I have the same concerns. You know, in a perfect world, we'd be able to hook to the centralized sewer system out of Dixon, which we contracted for so many years ago, and that's not where we are right now. And it seems that that's not going to stop growth in Fairview. So builders are trying to find alternative ways to build homes in the city. And the decentralized step system is one of those alternatives. And there, as I understand rezoning, and I'm not an expert. We have a planning commission that does a great job. But what's before the board tonight is the rezoning of this property. And as far as I can tell, it appears that the request is appropriate in terms of the land use plan that's in place. It's an appropriate request. And, you know, there's going to be multiple other steps along the process to deal with some of these very, very valid concerns. And I think it's a great idea to maybe get Dixon to Water Authority here, play that tape. Let's have a community workshop to talk about these issues. Because I want to be educated more on it as well. I have the same exact concerns. I don't live too awfully far from this property. But for purposes of tonight, I understand the frustration. But for purposes of tonight, it's just about the rezoning of the property. And I can assure you, there's going to be a lot of engineers look at this through the process. So, thank you.
Ms. Mayor, one thing I'd like to add is this property is zoned R20, and we're requesting that it be rezoned to RS 20. And a part of that reasoning is that will allow us more flexibility to preserve some of the more natural features like the creeks and be able to provide more open space in a more creative way. So we're not asking for any more density increase as to what's already allocated on the property right now. This just gives more flexibility to do things like preserve tree lines and creeks and other natural features.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience, or did you want to come back up and ask any more questions or... Nobody? Okay. Oh, go ahead. Yep.
You know, I think I'm operating on rumor. I'd like to know the scale of the property. How many homes? What kind of homes? When does it start? Those kinds of issues. Nobody has told me directly, so I'd like to know those things.
Okay. Can you answer that for him?
It's currently a little over 42 acres total, and we're proposing 84 lots total. So two units per acre, which is what is allowed under the current zoning as well. And there'll be a mix of homes, both alley products as well as front-loaded homes. So we're trying to give a mix of product styles. As far as the timing, I couldn't answer that. I'd have to talk to the owner more directly.
Okay. And as it goes forward, just one more comment. As this is the rezoning, as it was mentioned, there'll be several opportunities that we can address some of this. And, you know, just to kind of ease your mind, be happy, I've spoken with Dorian Bojer with the Harpeth Watershed many times on these drip systems, because I figured anybody that was going to be able to tear a system apart would be somebody that was trying to protect waterways. I'll be glad to invite her also to the same meeting, and maybe y'all can ask the questions. Believe it or not, it's... She's not against the systems. She is one of the first people that I've asked. But she does also have some great ideas that a developer can do to help protect even more concerns of issues of water. So...
I spoke with Ms. Bowles as well, and one of the things that she's... That she has concerns about about the system, she's not opposed to it, is the property owner that spoke earlier is concerned about just the proximity of these drip fields to creeks and then the barriers between that. So she has some of the same concerns. But again, if we can get that meeting together, get those folks here, I hope that it would be beneficial for everybody. So I think that'd be a good idea.
I agree. Okay, anybody would like to come up? Okay, if that's the case, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then I will open tonight's Board of Commissioners. I'd like to call tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting to order is April 7, 2016. I'm sorry, we're running a little late tonight from the public hearing, but it is 7:25. The first item on the agenda is the prayer and pledge. Please stand. And bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, I'd like to thank you for this day and thank you for everything you've given us. Thank you for the opportunities to come and live in this great city, to have such a wonderful community and great citizens. Thank you for the opportunity of letting the board serve and represent. May all the decisions that we make tonight represent you and the citizens that we serve in Jesus' name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Third item would be citizens' comments.
Mayor, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Okay, thank you. Fourth item would be awards and recognitions. Mr. Hall?
Mayor, I haven't... Don't have any awards and recognitions tonight.
Okay, great. I do want to take the opportunity to say congratulations to all the wonderful athletes that competed at Fairview High School for the Special Olympics. We had most... All the Fairview schools were there and represented, Hillsborough, Waves, Franklin. So it was a great event, and I would just like to congratulate all the winners. Yes? Yes. It is the 16th. Well, definitely, that'll go ahead and be a great segue to public announcement. And the... As... I don't think it's too late. I think they had an early sign-up. And then I think there still is a later sign-up. But if I'm wrong, I apologize. But I... It is the 16th. Do you have a time that they are supposed to be there? I know it's...
Please, they start registering at eight, right now.
Okay. Okay, so we registered at eight. But double-check all that. And it's just a wonderful event to celebrate a woman that just gave so much to our community, and it's a great way to honor her. So I encourage anybody that is around to go. And I think you don't have to run, so feel free to come and just enjoy the environment and honoring her, and feel free to walk. The other thing is, we have the Health Department Walk Across America. They're doing Williamson County. And it's Saturday at the Rec Center at nine o'clock. Nine o'clock. And so encourage families, everybody that would like to come out and participate, is a countywide event that the Health Department's doing. So... And it's at the Rec Center, so be glad for anybody to come out to that. Is there anything else going on Saturday? I heard I was missing a very important ballgame by Mr. Reese Carter. But I'll have to make that up. I'm excited for that opportunity. But any other things going on Saturday? Besides ball season's in full swing, I'm sure. Okay, I guess that's it for public announcements. And we'll move on to staff comments. And I'll start with Mr. Hall as... With his codes report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the Greenland... We have the Greenland states on the planning commission Tuesday night, we have the construction phase drawings, and we also have construction drawings on the last phase of Kyle's Creek on the agenda Tuesday night. Dunkin' Donuts is, was able to get building permits, interior remodeling, without coming to the planning commission, so they're underway with remodeling this building over here where they're gonna be going. The new Hardee's will, is resubmitting a new rendering that is ninety-one percent brick this time, so we're hoping that we can approve that and move that along at a...
That was their choice, right Wayne? That was their choice?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that was their choice. And it was, I kept calling, I couldn't get any answer, nobody was returning my calls, so I lucked out and called Larry Tucker at the right moment. She said, Wayne, it's, it'll be there by one o'clock on Friday, so I said, I'm sending you the renderings of it, so it's not color, but Tom, if you wanna put that up, it'd be... Our grants are moving forward, the Roadscapes project, as y'all well can see, the dead grass areas up there, that's where the planning's gonna be, and we already have scheduled a ribbon cutting, our dedication, more or less, for Dan Cubic on the twenty-second of May, at two o'clock on a Sunday afternoon. The Road, the sidewalk grants, Safe Routes to School, we signed an extension tonight on that, I believe it's on the agenda to do so, so that will be the phase that we'll be moving toward construction pretty soon on that, so.
Exciting stuff, Mr. Hall. We talked about Hardee's, and just to clarify, Hardee's, after doing all the pricing and bidding, they decided it was cheaper to do all brick like we originally was wanting, so now that puts them, there's some discussion on how they'll have to come back, I think everything else is met, so, but hopefully it'll be soon, it looks like a beautiful building, so that is the number-one question I get all the time, is wanting to know where Hardee's, when it's gonna start, so hopefully soon, I can say.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not too late to get 'em on, we can add 'em on this agenda maybe for the planning commission, if it has to go in front?
It would have to be an added item if it comes in that quick, yeah.
Well, Mr., Mr. Hall's gonna look into that and let us know if it has to come back, but we look forward to that anymore, and I just explained for the citizens, the remodel for Dunkin' Donut, they don't have to come in front of the planning commission, just because they're not doing enough to...
Mostly interior and redecoration.
Reddecoration, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, exciting stuff. How about you, Mrs. Brandy Johnson? Okay. Okay, Mr. Darty, it's all you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two, two good things too, and I'm surprised Mr. Hall didn't steal my thunder on this one, but we...
I didn't wanna steal your thunder.
As far as we know, Mr. Hall and I, we were talking about it earlier, we have just received, the City of Fairview has just received its first-ever grant from Tennessee Department of Transportation. We got, we got, we got the money in the bank on the sixth, and I'm hoping to go down and pay that grant and take, uh, grant anticipation note off tomorrow. So that was, that was really, we were, we, this was one of those that was kinda dumped in our lap, and, and we fought through it, and just to see the money show up, it was like Christmas time. Also, I found fourteen thousand dollars in the SunTrust account that was supposed to be, it was due to us from the restructure, and, and I'm going to apply that money to the restructure line item, and it gets us under our budget, but I need to get a signature whenever the, whenever the lease was taken out, the signatures were under the previous board, so I need to get y'all's signatures, and then I just need to send it in, and they'll, they'll, we have to pay a small fee, I think it was two hundred something dollars, to get our fourteen thousand dollars, and then, but I was, I've been, I went around many circles trying to collect it, and I finally got the forms in the, in the direction that I needed to get those funds to us. So those are two things, that's the only two things I have to report on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as another side note, this, what is it? Safe Routes or School, the one that you're...
Yes, ma'am.
Time we get done with that grant, the Streetscape, or the, I always say Streetscape, but it's, what is it?
Roadscapes.
Roadscapes, I keep saying Streetscape.
And the restructuring grants is...
We will basically, that'll be the end, you will have closed every grant that was still open when you came.
Yes, ma'am.
So, congratulations, and I can't wait to celebrate that.
We did have a little bit of contact this past week or so on the sidewalk grant that we've asked for, T-Dot, on one hundred, couple of issues that they wanted to know, so we've...
Well, that's a new one.
Yes.
But you're closing everyone that you inherited...
I'm trying to get as many closed as I can.
That had sat there for years.
Mayor, if I can ask a question, what about the guardrail over by Fairview, Fairview Elementary School?
If we appropriate the money for it, I'm ready to do it, but it'd have to be done with schools closed this year.
That's no problem, as long as we know it's gonna be done.
It's one of my goals to get that done.
It's just a very dangerous situation.
I actually talked to the principal about that Tuesday night, at the Title I meeting that the mayor and I were at, and he's excited about that, and if you want me to, I can elaborate a little something else on the elementary school. They're going through a three-phase renovation for the next three years, they're gonna restore Fairview Elementary School in three phases. I realize that's not us, but it is us, because our children go there, you know, so that's...
Well, and the high school also is going, they're going through the same thing, some, the county had allotted that, so they'll be seeing that over the next couple of years, so it's much needed, so glad to see them doing that here in our community, so. Okay, anything from parks? I don't see Mr. Paisley. Okay, glad for him, glad he's good. Okay, and I would just assume that he would want to say summer camps, they're probably still registering, so we'll say that and move on. Okay, the next item is the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Old business, discuss and take action. From the Board of Commissioners workshop held April 7th, Commissioner Basell.
Thank you, Mayor. We met at six o'clock to discuss a couple of items that I had brought up at the previous meeting, one being an ordinance to address solicitation in specific, to establish some hours for door-to-door salespeople to be limited in their contact. The other to be a somewhat of a literal ordinance, but it's designed to address those items that are often thrown in our driveways and in our yards, that are unsolicited distribution of publications and/or advertisements. I passed out at the meeting a couple of representative ordinances that I picked up through internet research, where they had already addressed this, and those were provided to the city attorney, and so my motion for this evening is simply to incorporate the discussion that we had, of which he was present, and those items which I gave him, and to authorize him to draft a couple of ordinances for us to consider enacting to address those two issues. So that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and second, any other discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of questions on, I know that a lot of places have permits that are required for people doing kind of solicitation, especially if it's nonprofit, and I apologize for not being here for that, but is that something that we can consider?
It's already in Chapter Nine.
Is it? Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize for that, because I think that would be very important for us to be able to distinguish with the people what the hours or permits gonna be when they do decide to come in and do that, so that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any other?
Who's gonna enforce it? Is it codes or police department?
Well, in my opinion, for the solicitation, it would be both, that the codes inspector and/or the police department could enforce it for the illegal distribution of publications, that it would be codes.
And how will that be handled on a Saturday?
On a Saturday, then the enforcement could be done on Monday.
So, citizens are just gonna turn it in?
One of the things that I put in there was a, similar to a no-call list that we have now for our phones, was to have a no-publication list, requiring the vendor to have a no-publication list.
And we're gonna enforce that? You're for certain of that?
Well, if, if we enact this, I know at, on Grammar Drive, we're gonna enforce it. Because I'm gonna be the first one to call and complain, and, and...
Have you spoken to the judge about it?
No, I have not.
Okay, no more discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, new business, discuss and take action, certification of compliance for wine in grocery stores at Walmart, Mr. Hall?
Uh, this has got some legal situations, and I'm gonna let Larry address this tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Basically, this is the first, I believe, first application we've had for wine sales in grocery stores, and those sales are controlled by TCA Section 57-3-803 and 806. It's very similar to the thing that we have for liquor stores, liquor other than beer, i.e. hard liquor, that, the only thing that's required to the city, the city doesn't issue the license, the ABC does. We have no control over that, other than the statute does require that the person or entity, corporation, individual who's submitting this, send with their application to the ABC a certificate of compliance from the city, which has two items, one, that the people who are listed as owners, or in case of a corporation, the officers have undergone a background check and pass the requirements relative to crime, and not conviction of any crimes in the last ten, any felonies in the last ten years. And the second item is that they have, the city certifies that the people have selected a site that is, meets all the codes requirements. That's the only thing that, that your approval would be doing. The, there is another provision in there that was not around, or you don't normally see with, with those. When this thing came in, I don't know if they anticipated somebody would just set this back and not look at it, but if the application is submitted, and within sixty days, the local legislative body has not acted on it, it passes itself. The other provision is that if you don't do that within the sixty days, the entity that has applied, can apply to the chance record to require the board to do that. I, this is just, this doesn't say this in the statute, this is just my conjecture, but the reason, only reason I could see for that is that at this point in time, since the sales don't come in until July the first, nobody's gonna be damaged by it, but at some point, if you sit on for that sixty days, somebody might look at it and say, well, you could have passed this, my application was here, you've had sixty days, you've caused me wine sales for sixty days, and I can see somebody looking at that for damages. It doesn't say that, that's just my thought. There'd be no other reason for having it, because if it automatically passes itself after sixty days, because somebody didn't act on it, you know, and I don't get any, have any action of it, and just go start and do my sales, submit my application with an affidavit saying that the board, the application was made, the board didn't act on it, but I'm putting that out there just for information for you. Are they in compliance with the two things that you said, the background check and the codes going out, and they're in compliance? I mean, I read it, I saw the background checks, so they're in compliance. It came back with the package, and none of the four officers listed, I believe it was four, might have been five, but I do know none of them had any criminal background history.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, we got a first and second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discuss and take action, and recommendations from Park Board, Park Commission, Rowe. Mr. Rowe, do you want him up? Okay.
Commissioners, the Park Commission is using a parks development chart to keep track of things that are in process, things, the suggestions for future, and we review that on every meeting, and, and we did discover, or when we were reviewing that, that at least two of the items that are on here, item, item one and three, were approved by the board in the March 19th meeting. And I know there's been discussions in the past, or recently, about projects that have been approved and not acted on, and so we thought it would be a good opportunity to bring it back before you, and just bring that up again and ask you to, to act on it. Item one is the ADA trail to Joanne's classroom. If I, if I may, just kinda refresh what, what was gonna be done on that, or what you approved. The project, when completed, will provide wheelchair accessibility from two points, the back porch of the nature center, as well as the nature center parking lot, all the way back to the classroom. There will also be a link to the sidewalk, which already leads into the park, along Bowie Lake Road from Highway 100. Thus, the project, when completed, will make it possible for someone in a wheelchair to transit from the corner of Highway 100 and Bowie Lake Road, all the way to Joanne's classroom. I believe, Mr. Hall, that the engineering has been done on that, and the survey?
The survey's been done, but the engineering has not. We've put a hold on the engineering for a while, but I can, with the board's approval, I can move forward with getting that done.
At that time, a year ago, that the engineer indicated he thought the project would run under twenty-five thousand dollars, and it's expected, that price is expected to include the engineering fee and the cost of surfacing the trail and bringing it into ADA compliance. And then if I may, go to item three.
Mr., hold on just a second. So why are we, why are we keeping it out? I mean, it was all approved.
It was all approved, but this, the funds would come out of the park fund.
Okay.
And I think there were some other things that was at issue at the time, so, and then Will was extremely busy, and every time I would ask about the engineering on it, he didn't seem to be able to have time to work it in, but I think now he can get it worked in, so.
So we can expedite it?
Yes, sir, I could.
Okay. As, as long as it's being, I, that'd be a great thing to do, since everybody got...
Well, and I think a lot of it really had to do with money at the time, so...
It was during budget time, and, you know, it just didn't look good to be spending money on projects right at the time.
Agreed. Okay, go ahead.
And then item three, I'm gonna jump to that, the road paving at the nature center, it was, we had gotten from the Dan Eubanks... It was, we had gotten from the Dan Eubanks Tennessee Valley Paving a guesstimate on there of about $30,000 to repave that. And of course, to refresh, I think originally it was around $59,000. And with the oil prices down and low right now, the city can really save a lot of money on that. So those two, I know that you folks approved back in March 19th of 2015. So we're just bringing that back before you because of the discussion in the past about items that are, were approved and not acted on. Then, the second item, the completion of the Forest Management Plan, that's the only item that's left to be completed in the Bowie Park Master Plan. I'm not sure if that's been approved, but we recommend that you go forward with that unless there's some circumstances that would prevent that. So I appreciate your time.
Just one, it was approved, but then it was rescinded at some point in time because there was a new, somebody from Forestry came in and, go ahead, update that.
There was actually some complaints about cutting trees. They were a little dissatisfied with the test area that we'd been done, so it's sort of been put on hold, as far as that goes. But at that time, the bid, the first bid was under $10,000, but the second one went over close to $12,000. So I'm saying now, if we contact them again, I would say the price has gone up again. But the land trust has to continue to follow through and approve it, you know, so. It's another major step to have to go through, but, you know, we're willing to do it if y'all are ready to do it.
Okay, go ahead.
Back up a little bit to the paving in front of the Nature Center. Where are we at on doing that?
We need to put it out to bid.
Well, it'll be done pretty soon.
I can do it, yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
And both of those were approved to come out of the park fund?
Yes, ma'am.
And how much is in the park fund?
Tom?
I'm not sure myself.
Okay.
I think if there was a priority, I would go with the ADA to Joanne's classroom.
Okay, $130,000? $135,000? Okay. Well, I mean, basically, I think both of them have been approved to come out. And so I don't know that we have to do anything, except if the board wants to, you know, give opinions or encouragement on whether or not they want to proceed at this time, or have Mr. Hall do something different.
I think we're ready to move forward. And part of the problem was when the asphalt places closed down in November, December, and we're back in the springtime now and they're open. It'll probably have a big rebid on some of it, the parking lots here, because of that, which I think will be a good thing for us, because prices should be low.
I'll move forward with the engineering on the Joanne's classroom, and then as soon as I get that, then I can put it out to bid. But the pavement, I can put that out to bid pretty soon.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll just move that on to Mr. Hall. And then, as far as the Forest Management Plan, I don't, you know, just at your time, when you see what way or direction we need to go. I know y'all had a meeting at some point.
I'll get with Keith and the park staff.
And then we can come back and discuss, because I think the whole plan has to be redone, resubmitted, and come back. So just put it on the agenda when you're ready for us to discuss. Okay, that'll bring us to item C, discuss or take action on approval of chipper bid. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. As y'all well know, our chipper had a major accident, and we've had too much of a repair bill that was going to cost, I think, in excess of $17,000 just to repair, and no guarantee that it wouldn't break again, because it was the type metal that, you know, once it starts to break, it goes a lot quicker. We had three bids. One of the bids was not the type of equipment that we really needed. With the other two bids, one was for $53,000, and the other one was $43,000, and I'm recommending y'all approve the low bid of $43,831. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second. Any discussion? And where does the money come out of?
Three days.
Three days, I believe.
Three days, okay.
I don't have any questions about the bid itself, but I'll have some questions about funding when we get to that item.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, do we have a motion?
About first and second.
Okay, with all that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Item D, discuss and/or take action on Amendment Number Two on Safe Routes to School Contract. Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mayor. The original bid timeframe ran out with T-DOT, and this is the amendment to reinstate the, ending up the project. And as, I think some of my numerous trips to T-DOT, this was the thing that we needed to do with, Kimmy Horn was there and present with me, talking to the director. And so therefore, we'd need to approve this contract so we can move forward to get the final phase of it done.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item E, discuss and take action on interlocal cooperation agreement or 21st Gistral District Judge Task Force.
Move to approve.
Greg, I had trouble with that one. Okay, got a first and second. All in favor?
We've got a question.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Discussion.
Is this where we pay them X amount of money a year?
This is just the agreement, and all of the cities and the county has to do this agreement. And the county attorney was one of the, he went through the whole thing, and our attorney will look at what it is, and it's signed by the mayor and our city attorney.
I just want to make sure the difference, because I know we do pay them a fee every year.
Yes, we give them a donation.
And I do have some questions for you later on about the new radio system.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all.
Things like, I remember, we did this about the same time last year. I've looked at the agreement. It's typical interlocal agreement.
It is. I don't have any questions about it. I just want to make sure what was involved in it.
Things that they normally have, and I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. F, discuss and/or take action on Police Department vacation buy-down. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess about a week ago, week and a half ago, the police chief came in and asked me to run some numbers. He's, due to the, and this is really a very situation I don't think will happen very often, hopefully. But the way that they're staffed right now is nobody can take their vacation, and if anybody takes off, whoever works for them is getting time and a half because they're on overtime. So we came up with the idea of, so they wouldn't lose their time, and we wouldn't pay overtime. It would be cheaper to pay down the vacation. There's plenty of money in salaries line item due to attrition this year. They should, they'll have in excess of $90,000 in their salary line item. And my recommendation is to pay the $27,000 out of that, and we should still have a $66,000 under budget in that salaries line item. And that's my recommendation. There would be no budget amendment required. The money is just salaries that was not paid because of attrition. And any other particulars, you can ask Chief Harris.
Is there any action needed by us? It sounds like more of a management decision. It's in the budget. We don't have to...
I think since it was such a...
Well, it's never been done before.
Since it was a buy-down of vacation time, we wanted the board's approval.
What are the limits to the buy-down on it?
I'm not aware of any buy-down limits, as far as...
Well, I'm saying, you're going to...
Well, the way it is, we can only roll over a certain amount of hours. Some of them can roll over one week, some of them can roll over two weeks. Well, and we're going to still roll over that. We're not going to buy that part back. What they can roll over, they'll roll over. But it's the weeks that they're not going to be able to take, that if you don't take it, you lose it. And these guys have worked hard, and they deserve, you know, they've not taken vacations. They can't take vacation.
And this will be by the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just...
How...
All out there.
How many people do you think this will affect?
I had a list, and I didn't have it with me. Everybody that's working right now, except for four officers, and they took a lot of time during the summer. And they have, they're going to roll, they're still going to roll over, but...
Okay.
And is it just going to affect the police department and not any other city employee?
Just the police department. I just can't let anybody off on vacation. If I do, I'm going to have to have the other officers to work seven days a week.
Oh, I understand completely. I'm just trying to make sure that we're fair and equitable with everybody else, as far as losing their vacation time, if they're in another department also. I just, to be fair with everybody.
Well, I mean, I think in this situation, I understand that's a good, valid point to bring up, but in this situation, it's basically, sure, we can let them have the vacation, but if we're, if he's not allowing anybody to take their vacation because of the overtime cost, you know, then there's really not a lot of choices, and we don't want to punish people that've worked hard. But I do have a question, though. How many patrol officers, because, you know, right now, how many shortage of patrol officers? Like, what was budgeted, and what are you...
Six.
So, and then what are you short right now?
Six.
Six patrol officers?
Yes.
So you, six additional? Are you...
We're running, and I hate to say it, we're running with two officers per shift.
Okay.
Which is dangerous. If we have a rec, and they're out working rec, usually takes two officers. And then you have a domestic, or if we get a robbery or whatever, you've got to send two officers. Somebody either, you're only going to send one, because the other's tied up on the traffic in the rec.
Transports?
Transports. And I have to admit, the fire department, if we work recs, I mean, they're there to help us track traffic. And I do have a traffic officer, which, when he's here, you know, working his shift, he does all the recs.
Okay. So I'm just trying to understand, where, what's lacking is some of the other positions. The patrol officers, you budgeted for six, and...
We should have...
More than that.
Well, that's what I just asked, yeah.
We budgeted for 16.
Okay, and you're short six?
Yes.
And that's due to nothing else, just by some turnover this year?
Correct.
Okay. So, but because we haven't been hiring right now, that has enabled people to take off. Or before, you might just have other people fill in?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
Including the people that are on administrative leave, how many people are there in the police department?
Three. We're short three.
Well, I know how many are on administrative leave, but how many total do you have, including those folks?
I'd have to add them up. And that's leaving out my CID. I have three in CID, and I'm shorting it also. I mean, they've been working overtime to do their part. So, let's see, I have, right now, I have three, six, 10, 11, 12, 13. There's 13 of us.
That's all? It's in the whole police department run out, 13?
13.
Including the three that are...
No, not, 13 working, it'd be 16.
Okay.
And you originally budgeted for 22 in the department?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Just counting your IT and everything?
Sir?
Just counting your IT person and everything, right?
Yes, sir. And that's, and we do the drugs. We have a drug officer and a K-9 officer.
So just so I understand, going back to the actual issues on the agenda, if they're working overtime right now, we're having to pay time and a half, but instead of paying time and a half, we're going to give them comp time, vacation time?
They've got comp time out the...
Comp time, and that's what they're going to be cashing in?
No, sir, they're cashing in their vacation.
Oh, vacation.
Yes, sir. We're trying to pay them overtime to keep the comp down, comp time down, because some of them have $100 hours comp time. So we're just trying to get that down. But the vacation, they lose, and I don't want the officers to lose their vacation.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a first and second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item G, discuss and/or take action on Bill 201607.
Orders number 921, an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee's budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Chipper, Mr. Dogger.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The, this is the budget amendment to appropriate funds out of state street aid to purchase the chipper.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that, I know, first of all, I want to make sure that we get this, because I think the guys in the street department need it, however we have to fund it. But I was concerned after, and I don't want to rehash the whole state street aid thing that we did during last budget year, but in looking through some of the possible uses for the state street aid, it does say that you can purchase equipment for removing trees, limbs, leaves, and similar objects. I guess my question is, is that talking about those items that may fall on city streets and us have to go out and remove those versus items that people pull from their private property down to the street and we go out and, which is a great service, and I want us to continue to provide that service to the citizens. But it seems like we probably, and this is just me, I don't have anything to back this up, but it seems like we probably use it for that, for a greater percentage of time than we would just going out, and I think somebody in the street department's here, maybe they can tell us, but just going out and removing something that fell on a city street. I don't know. I just want to make sure that we're in the clear, and that's an appropriate use, and maybe the city attorney can give us his opinion about it as well. But certainly, it's something I want to find funding for, one way or the other.
Why don't you address, if you will, about, you know, if it's appropriate for it to be out of the street?
I think if they don't have a requirement that you break down into percentages of removal of items from, that fell into the street versus items that you're picking up at the street, if they don't have that requirement, I think you'd be okay. If they have to report to the state on what percentage of the use of the chipper is for items that are lost, thrown in the street, you know, fall off trucks, or fall out because of storms or whatever, if they have to do that, then I think you'd have a problem. But I don't believe you're making such a report, do you, Tom?
Yes, sir.
So I think you'd be okay.
Mayor could ask, Todd, do y'all have to do any report like that?
What's that now?
To the state about...
No, no. That chipper is 95% right away, city right away and street right away. We very seldom, we might go down in the park and do the Christmas trees after Christmas, but that's about it. We very seldom, we might go down in the park and do the Christmas trees after Christmas, but that's about it.
When you say city right away, are you talking about stuff that fell in the city right away? Right away, are you talking about stuff that people drag from their private property to the right away?
Right away, yeah, once they drag it into the city easement, it becomes city right away, so we remove there. Correct.
But there's a distinction, I just want to make, there's a distinction between the two.
If they're not required to make such a report, though, I think you'd be okay.
Okay, fair enough.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item H, discuss and/or take action on city of Fairview budget 2016-17 fiscal year. Mr. Darty.
My just back.
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, just want to say that tonight, I'm going to be as brief as possible. But there's, there's two areas that I would like for the board to, um, I kind of look at tonight as a negotiation phase. Probably the two biggest areas of, of, that we'll need to discuss are revenue and salaries. So as we go through, you'll see I've got those two items highlighted in red. And, and the, uh, and the, the other area that we might have a little discussion on is, is health insurance. But I'm going to go through, I've got a PowerPoint and feel free, let's, let's just discuss. Um, and I'll, I sent y'all out a packet, there's, there's a slight difference in it. But, um, pretty much it's, it's the same. And I'm hoping my clicker works, I tested it out earlier. We started out with some goals and this first goal, Mr. Hall and I have had for about two. Policy procedures, human resource, risk management and public relations. We feel like we addressed this in the hiring of the new city manager and as well as HR specialist. We feel like it's important that we compensate the employees with performance, performance based merit raises. That's in there. We also feel like it's important to increase our health insurance program. We feel like it's important that we staff the fire department with four persons on shift. I, I think the fire chiefs here, but if you have any questions on that, we, our main thing is, is we want to maintain our current ISO rating. And, and it's getting harder and harder to fill shifts with, with volunteers. And this allows for us to have the state mandated four person on shift. And also maybe somebody can take a day off and a volunteer can fill in while they're off. We also wanted to restructure the staffing of the police department, which we did. We feel like this, this budget meets these goals and provides a moderate increase for departmental operations. Oh, that's kind of small, isn't it? This first revenue number, I've got it, the fiscal sixteen numbers out beside it. This is with a ninety-three cent property tax rate. And, and that's pretty much the only thing we need to discuss tonight about revenue as far as back and forth. Of course, everybody knows that, that going through a, um, new appraisal process with the county. And, and I've talked with them three different occasions and I believe that, that these are as accurate a numbers as I can have right now. And he said I should be very, very close. So it's probably going to be another six weeks before the certified rate is out. But he said this is, this is as close as he can give me.
Can I stop you real fast and ask you a question about that before we go any further?
Yes.
In the email that you sent, the way I understood it is you said that the certified tax rate will be below your recommended, recommended rate.
Correct.
So are you saying that after the reassessments or reappraisal, the new appraisals come out, that we will still see an increase in property tax in terms of your tax rate? Your tax rate would be higher, in other words, than what would be required for us to be revenue neutral?
Correct.
So you're saying, so essentially it's another tax increase?
And I've got a, it could be. I mean, like I said, I've got, I've got the, um, I've got numbers and it's, it's going to be up to y'all. Y'all hold the purse strings.
Yeah.
This is just recommendations.
I understand, well, I'll just, can I comment just on that portion right now?
Sure.
I will not vote for anything that creates another tax increase. It will have to be revenue neutral. In other words, it's going to have to, we need to see what the, the appraisals come out. And then we need to figure out what we need to set our tax rate at that basically equals the same in property tax revenue this fiscal year as it did last fiscal year.
Well, it should be right around eighty-seven to eighty-eight cents. So let's, let's go over and just talk about that for a little bit because that's really what we need to get a handle on. I went down and as you see, fiscal year sixteen, that's our, that was what we had in the budget for our property taxes. You see it's eighty-eight cents, it's nineteen hundred dollars off. Go to eighty-seven cents, seventeen hundred dollars off. So if that's, if that's the route the board wants to go, um, you know, it's, it's really easy to plug that number in.
When is the assessment going to be official?
Well, they finished all of their, um, all of their, about six weeks. They got all their appraisals done, but they haven't got the assessments done. And then you have different rates, you've got, I think it's, um, twenty-five percent on personal property. I mean, thirty percent on personal property, twenty-five percent on residential and forty percent on commercial. And, but they've gotten all the, their appraisals done. They just haven't got their assessments done. But he told me, uh, I don't know if you of y'all familiar with Brad Coleman? He, he's the, he's the guy I talked to. He told me this is as close as I can get. And he said it should be right on, so. Um, you know, like I said, I want to go back and forth on this because I feel like if we get the revenue number correct and we get the salary number correct, rest of it's pretty, pretty easy. So what, I guess.
Well, my thought is obviously I'm, I'm not raising taxes, I want to lower it. And I'm looking at ten to fifteen cents less than, um, last year. And I'd like to see us decrease again the next year as we get in better shape. So, um, what that magic number is, if it's fourteen cents or whatever, we still want our citizens to see a decrease.
So you're saying ten cents off that, you're saying around seventy?
Well, I'm looking at maybe, um, you know, eighty-five cents, yes.
Tom, would you explain to me how this factors in the growth? If we set our tax rate based upon fiscal year sixteen revenue, what about all the additional properties, houses, et cetera, that we acquired during fiscal year sixteen? It should have an increased growth. If you leave your tax basis where it is, basically the growth properties didn't have to pay any tax to the city. The city should have more tax revenue every year. You shouldn't, you, you can't believe that it's, it's the, the idea of revenue neutral is revenue neutral on an individual basis. It's not revenue neutral on the city. You're looking at me like you don't.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm following.
So, so how do, your chart works on an individual basis. If my tax was four hundred dollars this year, my tax rate should be adjusted so that my tax is four hundred dollars next year. But the house that they built two doors down from me, I can't absorb that into the overall. Their four hundred dollars should be a four hundred dollar addition.
Let me restate that, that, that's what I mean. When I say, maybe, maybe it won't be the exact same line item and number. But I mean, I don't want it to result in effective increase in property tax to an individual.
Right.
Any individual.
Right, and, and according to Brad, if I take this year's, um, assessments, he said it should increase by fifteen percent. And that's where I came up with my number.
Which was eighty, eighty-seven cents?
Eighty-eight to, between eighty-eight and eighty-seven.
No, that's, that's not what your chart shows. Your chart shows, your chart shows no growth. But if we set the tax rate at eighty-eight cents, we, we will get the exact same amount of revenue next year on property tax that we took in this year.
Correct.
Okay, that will mean that any new property that came into existence will not be taxed. I mean, you know, at the macro level, it will be zero. We are absorbing, we are giving too much of a tax rate decrease because the, the rate may be eighty-eight cents, but the amount of revenue has to be more than that. Because the new properties now pay tax that didn't pay tax before.
Um, I understand what you're saying, but I think so much of it is our tax increase basically came, is not a forever tax. We never wanted to raise taxes to the amount. But I think in the decisions, we wanted to fix the problem and try to fix it as quickly as possible. So take that in consideration of, we have done good, we're living with our means. We got better at projecting the budget this year, Tom, you know, did a good job. So that extra money, we should give the people a break anyway. Because we did additional tax increase to fix, um, some bad budgets.
I'm not arguing that, Mayor.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, that's my point is, I think if we give, on our part, we can't control what the county does in their assessments.
That's not, that's not what I'm saying.
I know, but projecting, um, I'm scared to project revenue. I, it's got us in trouble in the past. So just say, let's, let's count in what potentially could. We just still don't know until those houses are on the ground, people are in them. That's going back to bad habits and using, um.
Right, and, and I agree with that. But we have a finite number of certificate of occupancies that we have issued to people during fiscal year sixteen. And if you use Tom's calculations, the way he has them there and you cut tax to eighty-eight cents, you are not factoring in that finite number of people that have been added to the tax rolls. Period, and that's the number that needs to be added. If we've had twelve new houses, just to use that, and each one of those pays four hundred dollars a month, or four hundred dollars a year, that's forty-eight hundred dollars that needs to be added to the anticipated property tax revenue. You can still lower the tax rate, but you've got to factor those in there. Because if you lower the tax rate.
But that's going to make it even lower than what it shows.
It could.
It will, it has to. If you're going to make it flat, it has to. If you leave it at eighty-eight and don't factor those in, we're going to have more income.
No, because this number that Brad is working off of right now is based upon the reapportionment, which includes those properties.
But I'm saying if you do.
You're sixteen.
Make that even.
No, but your sixteen ninety-nine five hundred doesn't include it.
Yes, go ahead.
I think we're talking about two different things. I understand Commissioner Marcel's point. The overall revenue from property tax may go up due to new construction or otherwise. But what I'm concerned about is keeping the effective tax rate neutral. That, I think we're talking two different things. Now, if we're talking about getting to the starting number by considering this possible increase in property tax due to new construction, that's fine, I tend to agree with the mayor on that, I'd rather just not consider it and if we get it, wonderful. It's just sort of a cushion. But, but, yeah, I think we're talking about two different things, is what I hear, I mean.
Well, I don't think so. I think if you base it, if, if we were to vote right now on eighty-eight cents, we would be, we would be setting ourselves up to absorb the, uh, revenue from any new construction we've had in fiscal year sixteen.
How? How?
Because, because his estimated property tax revenue that he's giving Tom includes that property.
But that's just his projection. I mean, they're still going to be taxed, they would just be taxed at the eighty-eight percent rate.
Same amount coming in, we're just equaling out the rate, reducing it from the dollar it is back down to whatever makes it flat. No matter what the rate is, the new homeowner has to pay the rate.
Pay it.
So that's gravy on top of the number that's there.
No.
They're not going to be there free next year.
The estimated property tax revenue that he's giving you will include houses built in fiscal year sixteen. Your budgeted property tax revenue for fiscal year sixteen did not include those houses. So if you're trying to get to the sixteen ninety-nine five hundred, you are absorbing in your rate reduction the, the new housing construction.
I kind of feel like, and I, I get what you're saying. I kind of feel like though, if we're just breaking even, then we need to, we need to come down lower. We didn't come down enough because we're still not, um, we're still profiting off of the people.
Breaking even after the reassessment has nothing to do with lowering these people's taxes. It needs to be lowered on top of evening out the reassessment.
Let, can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to comment on that as well. And although I think that eventually, potentially giving back this money when we have completed the stabilization plan, maybe something that we need to look at, I don't think we're going to be there this year. I think at the end of next year, it's a real consideration that this board would have to look at. What I don't want to do is give money back just to say we gave money back. And then us be in the position, two, three, four years down the road that we were in last year, where we have to turn around and increase property taxes again and do it exponentially like we did last year. I mean, because some people's taxes went up as much as fifty percent, their property tax. I mean, it was a thirty-five, I think, and a half cent increase. That's huge, that's huge all in one year. So I just don't want us to, to, to jump the gun and lower it too soon. And I certainly don't want us to increase any income this year from it. I think that's, that doesn't need to happen. It needs to be revenue neutral individually, on an individual basis. But, um, I, I just want us to think really hard about giving it back, although I want to do it. I, I mean, it's, it's the, it's, it's the popular thing to do. I just don't want us to turn around and have to raise it again a couple of years from now.
And I actually agree with that. I don't, I mean, I think we need to gradually do it as we get more stable. But one of the things that we're doing different now versus the past is we're living within our means and we're not over projecting budgets. And so if we, and we're not wastefully spending. So it kind of puts us in a stronger position than we ever been in before because we're not projecting future, we're only doing budgets on actuals. And that's a total difference from different budget talks that I've set in, so.
If I can just.
Yes.
We're, we're still in, in the middle of a stabilization plan, which is looking great. You've got earlier forecast, what we're going to be through with it in two instead of three. My opinion on it is when we reach that point, we should be looking and try to follow that one time. That the first time we cut it, we should cut it by thirty percent, I'm talking about the increase. The next year, if everything's the same, thirty percent, the next year thirty percent. And then adjust for, um.
Inflation.
Adjust for inflation because that's what we messed up before. You have to keep that adjusted if you're not going to be right back where we were. But that's my thought on it, on a plan that, that keeps us pulling in the right direction right now. Cause I'm totally against the city, pad in their pockets and taking out other people's pockets. They, they need it to live on every day. We don't, we had to get out of the hole that we're in to provide them services that we need. So that's my opinion on it. We're not through with it yet. When we're through with it, then we can go forward, move and reduce it back substantially at a time. As long as the budget looking good and we, we see where we're going to be. I, I have, I've always had the confidence that we're going to be able to grow like we're growing now. And I see it more every day, when we're talking about, uh, we're talking about property tax. I'm looking at an increased sales tax. Was our sales tax increased in the last year roughly? I'm looking at increased sales tax. Was our sales tax increased in the last year, roughly?
Is just a shade under two percent.
Two percent of what, though? What's, what's a dollar value?
Hmm. I'd have to calculate.
It's just gonna keep getting larger and larger and larger, these people coming in here, so... That, that's my outlook on what my opinion's gonna be on, on reducing the taxes. Uh, I've, I've got a problem in my, I don't know how much these adjustments are gonna be from the county. Um, me, I know with the growth that we have and the school plans that we're gonna be looking at, especially out here, I think the county may have to do a property tax increase before long. I'm surprised they aren't talking about it right now, which as far as I know, they're not. But with, with everything that's coming up right now, it's, I look for them to do that too. And these people out here don't need another look like that.
Well, can I say something?
Go ahead, please.
One of the other things that I wanna say, you, you, you listed five budget goals at the beginning of your presentation, and I can appreciate all those goals, uh, although I don't necessarily agree with all those goals. But one of the things that's not in there, and those are all, from what I could tell, largely employee-related goals or administrative-type related goals, which, again, I'm, I want to be the best employer that we can be for the Fairview, or for the employees that we have working for the city of Fairview and, and do all that we can do within our means. But the thing that I didn't see this year again in some of our goals are sort of things that may benefit the citizens more. I mean, we're, we're still very administrated, or administration-type focused and not really focused on the folks that have really paid the, the, the big chunk of what's put us in this better financial position. And I know the employees have too. I'm not taking anything away from them. Um, but there's some things that we've talked about, some of which Mr. Rowe brought up. There's some other things that we've approved that haven't been done. It just doesn't seem to be part of the budget that's been brought before this board last year or this year. I mean, one of the things that I want to see be funded this year is a study on the land use map. I think that's something we desperately need to look at. Uh, I don't know if that's in there or not, but we need to, we need to do that, make sure that's in there. Uh, we've talked about this, the, the impact fee study for, for a couple, a couple of years. I, I, I want that to be funded. I want us to figure out how to fund some of these projects. I know, Tom, that you had mentioned, you may need some new software. Maybe that's in your budget, I don't know, for the accounting. But I don't know if that's in there or not. But the point is this, there are a lot of things that we've talked about that have not been able to come to fruition because of our budget situation. And I wanna see, and I know we benefit, we're a service for the citizens, and that's our, that's our function. I understand that. But I think there's some things that we need to start looking to putting in action that we've not done. And I hope that's part of this budget. I know we don't have a line item, department-level budget. We've got just an overall summary. But I hope that's something that we're doing. Um, and the other thing, you, you know, that I didn't see in here, or maybe I just misunderstood, was we designated fifteen cents of the property tax increase for three specific funds. And it looks like that's sort of just lumped up, lumped into the revenue line item, um, and not segregated out to be used for those specific purposes. And I wanna make sure that we take that fifteen cents and it's being used as this board designated it to be used. Capital improvements, I, I just don't see any of that in this budget. I see a lot of things that make this a better place to work, and that's fair. I want it to be a better place to work. But it's also gonna, we're gonna have to give back to the citizens too on some level. And I just don't see that as being a budgetary goal, and I hope that through this process, we're gonna make that, implement some of that and make that a budgetary goal.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I would like to kinda go back to revenue a little bit. Um, I, I think this is vital that I kinda get a sense. I kinda have a sense from the mayor. Um, I feel like I have a sense from Commissioner Crutcher. Um, bottom line is, I believe that that rate will produce that amount of revenue next year. Uh, and of course, I can adjust the total revenue based on, on that. Uh, all the other revenues I have put together, just like y'all have asked me, uh, I, I, I used, uh, historical data. It ought to be very conservative, should come in one and a half, two percent, uh, greater, which will be up automatic reserve funding. Um, I like that. Um, but, you know, we, we've got to decide, you know, there's a lot of things going forward that, you know, we're gonna have to be looking at, um, infrastructure-wise, uh, planning-wise, and, you know, I... And in my opinion, the strongest asset of the, of the city is its employees and their ability to provide the service and their knowledge and their expertise. And, you know, it's, it's just, you, you, you can talk in one hand, I want a qualified person, but I only wanna pay them, um, for a non-qualified person. So, you know, I guess we, you got, we gotta find a medium that, uh, we can have some quality, uh, people that can provide service as well as meet our budgetary goals. And I guess my primary concern is, is hitting the, hitting the revenue right now. I mean, I, and if y'all wanna email me what y'all feel, I can have a, a solid number, um, and email it, email it back to you. Um, we can move on if nobody, nobody has any other, um, suggestions on property tax rate.
Well, um, Commissioner Crutcher had something else?
I don't on property tax. I don't on property tax. I was, I was gonna go back to the revenue, the, the number that we're gonna start with. But if you're about to go there, then I'll wait. If you're about to get into revenue, the revenue number.
Yeah, we'll go back. What, um, if I can hit my... Can you go back one? Okay. Um, that's with the ninety-three cents. So, like I said, I'll put in whatever everybody wants, and that'll be, that'll be, uh, that'll be the revenue.
What I wanna, what I, my question about the revenue, what I wanna understand is, is, and I know, I know you sent out two different budget summaries. One originally, and it looks like the one that you sent out originally had a ninety-cent property tax increase, and the projected unassigned revenue was five, uh, five, five million, four hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars. And that was with ninety cents. And in the revised number, or the revised budget summary that you sent out, and this is not a gotcha moment, this is just, I wanna understand how we're getting to that budget, that number. Um, the property tax rate went up, but the unassigned revenue went down.
Did you, did you read your email? That, I said there was a multiplication error, and it was just a, it was just a mathematical error?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Tom, this is not indicting you. I'm just trying to understand the number. I mean, I didn't, yes, I looked at the email, but you, you get really defensive in this, and I understand, but I'm just trying to understand the number. How do we get to, what, what did you use to calculate the five million, three hundred twelve thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars? I mean, I know that it says we're gonna start with actual revenue through March thirty-one, and then we was gonna use actual for last April, May, and June. Does that, does that calculate to five point three?
This number, you, you wanna know the difference between the original I sent you?
No.
Okay.
I just wanna know how, I just wanna know what makes up five point three million dollars, how you got to that number.
Okay, I, and I can send it to you. Um, I start out with a cash flow statement, and I go back from July to current. And I use last year's numbers. And then for the, for March, or for, um, April, May, and June, I use the previous year's. And I plug them in. And that, and then that plus the property tax is the total revenue. And all these numbers are just unassigned, uh, in the unassigned category of the general fund. And I might have a copy right here if, if you wanna look at it.
But that would be with the ninety-three cents, so we would need to reduce it down to, if we was, if we decided to go with eighty-eight, we'd have to, our starting number would have to be reduced down?
Yes.
All right, and then, as I understand it, the way we did last year, and, and I agree with you, I hope this will be an easier process this year. We're gonna take that starting number, whatever it is, based off of the tax rate that you get the fill for that we're gonna approve. Um, and then we're gonna reduce out of that the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of the stabilization fund.
I'm reducing now five fifty to finish it up.
That would finish up the stabilization fund next fiscal year? All right. And then does debt service come out of that, or where does it play into this?
Debt service, the only part coming out unassigned is the one oh seven, one forty. Now, our entire debt service is gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand.
Uh-huh.
Uh, some of that'll come out of the street aid, some of it'll come out of the facilities fund.
Okay. And then, would we not also have to reduce out of that number the fifteen cents that we've designated for specific purposes of the tax increase?
The way that needs to work is, um, you either need to tell me where you want me to put it, or you need to appropriate it and spend it.
I thought the purpose of...
Right now, it's, right now, it's in the reserves.
Okay. I thought the purpose of, at least five cents of it was to do the sinking fund to, to apply to debt service. So, at the end of this year, we should have, you know, five cents, however you come up with, whatever that number is. Uh, what is it, seventeen cents or, or seventeen thousand per penny or something? Is that your calculation to get to your tax?
I believe now it's up to nineteen.
Eighteen more.
Yeah.
So, but whatever that number would have been for this year, that would be money that we could apply to paying additional on the debt service, is what I envisioned.
Correct.
We did the five, okay. And what I'm asking is, is, is that, would we not have to take that off of our starting number? In other words, what number we're gonna start with? In other, in other words, the, the pile, the pool of money that we're gonna have for employee-related expenditures and other, you know, operating budgets, would we not take that out?
If y'all decide y'all wanna do that again this year, um, you know, you can look at it that way, or you can look at it as, you know, well, part of this expenditure in this line item is because it's designated for that. It really, it's very subjective in my mind. Um, I, I guess I would need some guidance on, on how y'all want to do that. Um, I realize, you know, it's separated out, but, you know, with the way the budget's set up, you appropriate the money and then you spend it. So, you know, if, like, say on the, if you wanted it to be for parks or for streets or whatever, you know, go to the street, highway and streets, um, budget and, you know, add five percent or, or whatever the number is and put it in there. Or if we wanted to set up, I can just run a spreadsheet, um, and pull it out of the, um, of the reserves.
And that's, and that's what I, I envisioned at least, is that it would go into those specific budgets for parks, streets, and then I think we had the debt service. But I wanted it to be above and beyond our regular debt service payments so that we could liquidate that debt sooner before we really got hit with some significant interest down the, down the road. Um, so, that was what I envisioned. Um, quickly.
It would be nice to pay that thing off in four years.
Well, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And are any of the other things that this board's tossed around for the past couple of years in the proposed budget at all? Is there any funding for the, the land use map study that we've talked about, the impact study that we've talked about? Um, I know that the codes department needed software. I think you guys needed software. Is any of that in the budget?
We're going to, um, put some IT in the budget this year, but I believe I'm gonna wait a year before I just rehaul, rehaul the, the software. I've, um, I've talked to a few people, and I just don't think we're ready as a staff for this, this type of change at, at the moment. I think, I think, uh, one more year, uh, and then we'll probably be ready.
I got one more question, if I can, and I'll be finished, I promise. Um, and I, I was looking at the, well, a couple more things actually, if you'll bear with me. Um, I personally, I, I know we've talked about the HR specialists, and although I think you're right about some of the policy issues and other things, that it would be beneficial to have a permanent HR person on staff. If you're gonna get an HR person, you're probably gonna have to find somebody who is a, an HR generalist that knows a little about a lot in terms of HR. And, you know, I, I think the salary that you've put in here for that person is probably pretty conservative, and in fact, I don't know that we would find anybody for that, um, that position at forty-five thousand dollars. But I, I, I'm not a proponent of hiring an HR person this year. I'm not. I, I just don't think that that's a position we should, we should fund. I think that I, I would be a proponent of setting aside money to have an HR consultant on an as-needed basis. I mean, the way I see it, based off the census numbers, and I know some folks didn't participate in the census, we've not seen a significant number of gr- uh, num- growth in Fairview. Uh, we've not seen a significant amount of growth within the administration or the, the city itself in terms of the number of employees. We operated for many years, um, albeit, I, I agree, the handbook's not good, and there's some things that need to be changed. I think we could get that service on a consulting basis, um, to fix some of our problems and not have a permanent HR person. So, that's one observation that I would make. The other observation about the actual breakdown in the number of, um, positions that are gonna be budgeted, same argument, we've not seen a significant number of growth, so I don't understand expanding city government. I, I just don't understand that. I, I would rather, I would rather be more lean and, and operate more efficiently on a, on a lesser budget than just expand to expand. And, and I know that everybody's gonna be able to justify hiring more people. But under the current situation, I can't, I can't see that. Um, and then in addition, although I think that it's not unreasonable for, um, the employees to potentially see some increase, whether it's cost of living or, um, merit increase, whatever, uh, this year, there's, there's inconsistency, and I know this is just a proposal, but there's inconsistency in how it's done. And I, I just, I, I kinda wanna hear the explanation. It seems like that the department head people got, some people got four percent. Um, there's an eight percent increase, and then there's two percent increases for others. And I, it's just, it's random. It's not really clear how that was, how that was put together. So, those are my comments, my questions, and I don't have anything else, I don't think.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Um, okay, I'll move on and go through the...
Hang on, we got a question over here.
Mm-hmm.
Before we just talked about, we've talked about for, for one, we kept me here a year and a half, two years about the impact fee and study about it, and we're talking about how much it was gonna cost to get it done, and we talked about how Spring Hill did their own, and we're gonna move forward with that. Well, if we don't get on the ball with that pretty quick, we're gonna start losing. Every time they pull a permit, it's probably not a right one.
You're exactly right.
And we just, that's something that I think should be a very high priority, is only gonna pay dividends. Only gonna pay dividends since we can do that. So, y'all can find out about, where, where we need to go with that. I like to see it on next, on the next agenda as far as where we're at on, um, whatever we have to try to do to get that done, because I don't, I don't wanna try to squeeze in there after we've already built five hundred homes and that's twelve hundred dollars a piece, and, you know, whatever the impact fee's gonna be, it's reasonable to keep people coming in. That's just a number that I think. So, can we put that on the agenda for the next meeting? The actions of that? Please, thanks.
And I do want an explanation about how we got to these raises. Maybe you're going there, I don't know.
I'll go there. Okay, we'll go with the proposed. I do have some other options later on, um, because this is, every, every, um, I sit down with each department head, uh, based on, on their observations and their evaluation of, of, um, their employees. We went through, they, they gave me their recommendations. Um, I, I think some people think that a merit raise is, is the same across the board. Um, and I, I guess it's, it's based on performance, and it's based on what your supervisor... And then the COLA, of course, is, is the same for everybody across the board. So, if the board would choose, have, we'd rather do a certain percentage of COLA and, and not do the merit raise, that would be, like I said, y'all control the purse strings, that would, that would decrease that cost. Um, and of course, it would decrease payroll taxes, and it would, uh, it wouldn't affect the retirement or anything else, but it would definitely affect lower the, the payroll costs. Um, now, going, I guess as far as for the salaries, if you want an answer on the, uh, discrepancies, there's, and I don't know where this number came from, but I've, I've heard, you know, anything over four perc- over a two-step raise, uh, need an explanation for. And, um, I guess I got in here somewhere.
I kinda think, isn't it, if it's in the budget year, if it's, you have to come in front of the board. Uh, not in the budget talks. Like, once the budget, if you're gonna give anybody a increase over that, then you would have to come back and, um, to the board. But in the budget talks, I don't know that that's, I haven't ever seen that, so...
Well, I just...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
The merit system that we passed said that for successful performance, you would receive a two percent raise. That once every three years, a supervisor with approval from the city manager... the city manager could grant an extra two percent raise, up to a total of four percent. Anything above four percent must be approved by the board.
But, but from what I've heard, there's some people that have not been evaluating. I mean, I've heard your explanation to how, and I don't want to spend a bunch of time on this, but I've heard your explanation, but it just seems arbitrary to me, because it seems like that all of the department heads and those right below the department heads have gotten four percent raises, and then the, the other folks from middle down have gotten two percent raises. And that, that doesn't seem fair to me. I, I don't know. Maybe it's, maybe it's equitable, I don't know.
Well, this is, this is, the people above four percent, there's seven employees. There's a street department worker, got a four point three-two. The fire chief recommended that a lieutenant receive a promotion from seven-five to eight-four with a five point five-nine percent increase because he received the fire inspector status. So he, he goes around and inspects, and there's a lot of liability in that. The police chief recommends the following promotions due to department restructure. He promoted a detective at nine-four to CID sergeant at nine-seven, which is a five point six-nine percent increase. He promoted a sergeant to, from eight-one to nine-one to detective with a seven point four-one. And he suggested to promote a officer to a sergeant, which was a fifteen point seven-nine percent increase. And he suggested to promote an officer to a K-9 officer, which was a twelve point five-five percent increase. And a lot of this is, is just going from one position to another. The city manager recommended that the finance director receive a four-step raise, which is a seven point five-nine percent increase. I've got the department heads here. If you want to-
The city manager recommended that based off what?
On, you'll have to ask him.
I've got his evaluation letter, if y'all would, I'd be glad to give y'all a copy of it. I'd be glad to read it, you know.
And like I said, this is all subjective. I mean, I've got several different options, and we can go to that. If you want to hear the, the reasons behind why the police department, the street department, the fire department, or the city manager made the, made the recommendations they did, we're prepared to present them. That doesn't mean we're, it's got to be that way.
Well, I'm, what about codes?
Yeah, they're-
They're, they've like increased their jobs, the people have, you know, doubled with their workloads, and you're telling me codes is not even like-
They both.
They got four percent.
Okay.
And, um-
He didn't read it off, so I wasn't having-
And to be honest, maybe they didn't want some of this, that one of them denied, didn't want, didn't want the extra raise.
Didn't want the extra. Let's talk to about it.
So, there was another one that was in the original proposal.
Well, the, the idea, I'm sorry.
I don't think they can deny. Yeah, go ahead.
The idea when we went down this road was to remove the subjectivity. It, it, and the system that we passed said that an evaluation would be done on every employee every year. If their evaluation was acceptable performance, they would get two percent. They would get four percent if their evaluation exceeded, but they were only entitled to that one point, once every three years, that they could, if they wanted more than four percent, if their manager or the city manager wanted to give them more than four percent, it came to the board for approval. A promotion is worth six percent to the person that gets promoted or to the step one of the grade they're moving to. So, I, and I don't have the chart in front of me, but if, if I'm the, the new K-9 officer and I was a patrolman, I get a six percent raise, or I go to the step one of the K-9 patrol officer, and that is what I get. I don't get a fifteen percent raise or a twelve percent raise. I get that based upon that amount. And after I've performed a year in that job, then I, then I can fall into the other category. But my promotion is worth six percent or to the lowest level, step one, whichever is the most. So if I'm currently making forty thousand dollars or thirty-five thousand dollars as a patrolman, and the six percent of that would be roughly, what, twenty-five hundred dollars? Twenty-two hundred dollars? Yet, the starting salary for the K-9 officer is thirty-nine thousand dollars, then I get thirty-nine thousand dollars. But if the six percent is thirty-seven-five and the starting salary of a K-9 officer is thirty-seven, I get six percent. It, it's, it's not, it's not subjective. It is the amount of the raise and the merit, as we set up the system, was, was designed to remove the number-one complaint, which is why we went that way in the first place, is that we had people that, that didn't get raises for years, six, seven, eight years. And then we had other people that got raises of ten percent every year. And, and it was not based on performance, it was based upon their relationship, and it was designed to remove. But we shouldn't process any raise on anybody that their personnel file doesn't have a, an appraisal in it, period. And, and I don't, I don't understand where the subjectivity comes from. I don't understand-
Go ahead.
How we've allowed it to get to this level.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Marcel. There shouldn't be anything subjective about it whatsoever, and maybe that wasn't the right word that you intended to use. But it, there shouldn't be any subjectivity in it. And, and I, you know, I think that this, this system, although good in theory, it doesn't seem to be working. It seems like it's going to break us. I mean, it, it's going to, we're, our employee-related expenditure's going up, 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 up every year. And I'm all for fairly compensating somebody for the work that they do, and I think we need to be competitive. But this system is, is going to break us. I mean, we're at seventy-five percent of our budget is employee-related expenditures. There's not a whole lot of room to do anything else except pay people. And, and, you know, maybe I don't understand the government. I mean, I didn't, I haven't worked for a government, but, you know, where I come from, I'm not entitled to my job. I'm not entitled to anything unless I do my job and do it well. And this whole idea that, or sense of entitlement and, and, and then trying to expand, create more jobs, is just affecting our ability to give the folks that are here that do a good job the money that they deserve. We're creating new positions, but we're not paying the people that are here doing a good job. And I want to focus more on that. Yeah, this, this is that, this isn't working. I didn't think it was working last year. I don't think it's working this year. We need to seriously look at this and, and revamp this, this system, because something's not, something's not working with it.
Well, and I think the step system that we created, even though our intentions were great, and we were wanting to be competitive and reward employees, but I do think it's kind of been flawed in some ways. And the issue is we should totally reevaluate the step system and how it works. But I still don't know that we're at the point where if we, I would rather see, let's give everybody a raise if there's new promotion is one thing, but, you know, especially without having the employees have to not get their two percent, which they were expecting to get. And then with the insurance cut, that I definitely think there's some things that we need to do now that we kind of can see the light at the end of the tunnel. But I'm not so sure the step system, the way it exists, is a good idea, and especially not where we are. Now, I do think there needs to be some increases, and I do think there's probably promotions that are well-deserved, but I'm not so sure I'm pleased with the step system.
I want to say just one more thing. And regardless of whether, Tom, you're entitled to that, that, that increase or not. I, I mean, you may very well be, and I know you've done some, some classes, and you've, you've, you know, gotten some other education to do the job, and you're, and we think you're doing a good job. But when Mr. Hall is now on an interim status, whether you're rightfully entitled to that raise or not, if he's giving you that raise on the, on the way out, that doesn't look good. That, that just doesn't look good. I don't know, I don't know how else you can say it. And that, there may be more to it. That may be not what's happening, but you're saying, you're going, no, that may, I don't think that's happening. But that's what it looks like. Because you're the only person that got that significant of an increase in this proposal. And you may be entitled to that money, I don't know. But we need to look at this. I agree. We need to look at this system.
I, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
Go ahead.
The increase was also offered to another person, too.
I, I think that we've got a couple of issues that we have to, we need to look at before we decide what to do. I, I think the, the first issue we have to look at is we skipped a year on them. And I'm, I'm still of the mindset that we had promised folks a merit raise, and then we didn't give it to them for whatever legitimate reason, that, that we have some responsibility there to do something this year in terms of an overall increase to everybody. Because we, we asked them to suck it up for a year, and they did that, and they continued to perform their job, and despite some fairly heavy attrition. So I, I'm for, and however we do it, either cost of living or merit or whatever, I'm for establishing a number, two percent, three percent, that everybody gets, period. I'm also for establishing these folks that are getting promotions, these folks that have accepted more responsibility. I, I am for giving them additional raise for that promotion. Again, a flat number. If we want to give those people a, a, say, six percent is what a promotion's worth, then that's what they get. And then we use this coming year to rework the system to begin whatever we want to do the following year. I think that's the simplest, it's the easiest for people to understand, and that we put as much energy into addition, with those kinds of raises, into trying to improve the health insurance again. Because the, the one comment that has been shared with me is that if, if it was an either-or, and I don't think it is an either-or, but if it is an either-or situation, the health insurance has had more of an impact than the lack of raise. So, I'd like to see us do those three things. I'd like to see us given a raise across the board of an amount, and I, I really think it should be three percent, but it should be across the board. The two percent for this year plus the half of what they should have gotten last year. So three percent, and then promotions should be a flat six percent, and that we put energy into improving the health insurance program and make it a priority this year to revamp the whole system again to a, a more affordable, long-run, range plan. The goal was to take the subjectivity out of it for people that do a good job and to manage it for the future. So that if I'm working for the city of Fairview, I know that if I continue to do a good job, I'm going to get this amount of money so I can plan for my, for my future. That was the goals. And, but in the administration, try as we will, we are not administering it in a way because our budget limitations keep us from spending the money that that system calls for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Crutcher.
Thank you. Just quickly, I've got two more things. One, I will recuse myself from any discussion about the health insurance plan. My family and I are on the health insurance plan, so I'll say that now before we even get into that. I will recuse myself. I will not be discussing or voting on anything that has to do with health insurance. There's clearly a conflict of interest. Two, going back to the step system, just quickly, and I don't want to belabor this point, but it, it just appears there's some inequality in the incomes in this. For, for instance, this is just one that I just looked at when I was going through here. Some, most department head-level folks are making in the fifties, like fifty-four thousand for parks director, chief, fire chief, sixty-three thousand, police chief, X amount of dollars, whatever, all in the sixty, seventy thousand dollar range, fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar range. We've got a codes, our court clerk, rather, that has been here for thirty-some odd years, almost, and she's making less than all of those folks. So there's just some, clearly some inequality in this plan to me. And I've not looked at codes. I don't know. I just don't understand it. We need to look at it.
Um, I, I think probably-
That's fifty-one.
He said codes are core.
Lot more what?
Well, I mean, did you, I really think, I don't know if you intended us to get into this discussion. I almost think now. My original intent was I was hoping Tom would have and Mr. Hall would have one-on-one meetings. We could get on a level ground. We didn't have to have this whole, and then we could ask the questions and get, and then come back and continue once they got a real clear picture of what was being spent and a number. I think your intent was probably just to get a number of tax rate to work from, from tonight. But I almost feel like we need a work session now, because there's going to be so many questions about pay scales and stuff like that, that we're just going to have to schedule something. And I don't know how else. I think we have too many questions that are going to be raised.
I'm going to give everybody a copy of this salary analysis. It's got four other options on there. Of course, there's, I mean, they're limitless as far as what, what we want to do. But I, I, I agree. I think, I think the, I think you meant to say the court clerk had thirty years, or I think-
That's what I meant. I'm sorry. It showed that she was making like fifty-something.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, that's, that's the grade and level, and I think she's on, she only has two more steps to go.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's the problem with the plan. It just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense.
That position max out, and two more steps. I mean, you know, for that position, for whatever reason, when the plan was put in, that was the value for that position.
Okay, well, let's, because I don't think we're going to be able to close. Did you have anything else you needed to present?
No, I just, I'm going to give everybody a copy of this, and we can schedule a session. And we can send you, I, what I, what I guess we can do, we can either send you what the reasoning is from the managers. But like I said, it's totally, I mean, we, we need to go with whatever route. You know, if we're going to stay at a seventy-eight between, I mean, if we're going down to, if we're going to go below eighty-eight cents, you know, yeah, we're going to have to make some changes real quick. And so that's, that's the kind of, kind of, that's, that's the way I think, you know, what's available and what's not.
Well, and I still go from the fact of, we did this increase in the taxes to help get us out of a situation and to get us back on a better track. Just because we had a successful year, I still worry about us moving on like everything's fixed. I see the light at the end of the tunnel, like I said earlier, but I really think that if we're, the thing that I have a problem with the step plan is it locked us in. It said every year, even though we shouldn't have been having that increase, we were married to an increase that we no longer could afford. And so if, you know, the staff loves a step increase, then maybe we just reevaluate the whole step plan, like, you know, if you want merit, you know, then we can look at it. But the way it's set up right now, I just, I have a problem still not being, our citizens are still paying more money, and we're not looking at giving them a huge increase, then I can't see- them a huge increase, then I can't see everybody just each year after year after year add known until we're out of this mess. So, I'm leaning towards still putting the step plan on hold, what, um, Commissioner Bissell recommended, maybe reevaluating and coming up with some kind of, um, you know, some kind of, either the COLA, or, you know, um, or the, um, going some kind of route like that, saying, yes, if there's people that deserve promotions, and that's the way we can go. But I, I just think we're going to have to, um, you know, really have your department heads realize that we are still on a tight budget.
Just real quick, because I know that's not your intention for tonight, but to go back just a little bit for history, several years ago, we did away with longevity PAC. We expected people, it was exactly the person you're talking about, 30 years, and $50 a year, add it all up, it's a thousand bucks a year, whatever, they, they considered it their Christmas fund. Raise or don't, you know, that way you know what you got, what you're going to get. If you get promoted, it goes, this is what it pays, go to court play, it's hard to pay. I believe, Terry, is Terry still here? We got two people, correct me if I'm wrong, we got two people that's been promoted on the, from the police department that are still not getting paid for it.
Well, that was, that was one of that, because I was concerned about the 15% and the 12.55%, and, um, and I told him, he said, oh, he's been, he's been doing the job for two years and ain't get paid, ain't got paid for it.
I done that, I brought it up a long time ago, because six, seven years ago, we had a captain, a JR, and we had a corporal that had been corporal and captain for over a year, and were not getting paid for it. I, I don't agree with that. If you're going to, if you're going to promote them, they're going to do the dues, and you get paid for it. I don't care what you do, but that doesn't need to be in there. That's not a good, good working relationship with your people. Uh, if you can get a responsibility, but you're not going to give them the pay, you're going to give them responsibility. But I'm all for saying it's, it's, it's 2% this year, 3%, 4%, that's what the county does. They have some set systems when they bring you in from different positions, but very few, everybody gets the same thing. And it's, it's easy to forecast, easy to do, we can afford it or we can't afford it. But that's, that's for another discussion. I'm going to let you move on, because it's getting late, it's about break time anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's supposed to be...
Well, I've got a, if we're not done with the discussion, I'll be the first to take the break, so, okay, we're going to take a, a three-minute break.
It won't take long than three minutes.
Okay, five.
It's going to be a laugh.
To re-adjourn the meeting, we'll go ahead, well, okay, so I would like to go ahead and bring us, um, back, um, we didn't really finish off the discussion, and then we didn't come up with what date we are going to have our budget discussion. So, if we could kind of look at a calendar and see, I think sooner than later for Tom can move on, would be the best thing, so, you know, maybe if we could look at, um, next Thursday, how does everybody's schedule up here Thursday night? No, if I got a shake?
No.
You said you couldn't, Stuart, okay. Um, what about, uh, what about Tuesday night, the 12? Tuesday, the 12?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Oh, I got something to do, it's just not in my calendar.
Plus a workshop.
Yeah, okay, and Monday we have the water, so I can't do that. Um, yeah, really, that's how I feel. Um, well, could we consider, uh, well, we could do something at the, um, you know, if everybody could get here early afternoon or midday, um, yes.
How would you go on, sir?
Must be nice being retired. One day I'll get it.
It could be mine. You two can do it.
I hope so, I just pray I make it. Okay, well, there's our code dilemmas.
But, it might go easier if I'm not there, I mean, you guys decide.
Well, there we go, no, I really would like everybody here.
I'll get a ticket, go ahead. I mean, it, it, I mean, for those were the only inputs I had.
Do it next Thursday.
Next Thursday? Okay, if that's okay, and you're really fine, I really don't want to exclude you from any discussions.
No, I'll be here till, you know, 15.
Okay, you're, you're the one that would be out, okay.
Oh, yeah, good schedule.
Well, what time's your game? We can do it earlier.
Oh, early afternoon, that'd be fine.
Okay, so what about if we do it, what time could you get here? Tony?
Regular work, every time, if I, I'll work it out.
Okay, any problem?
Yeah, I can't, I can't do it that day.
Okay. Okay, let, okay. Um, let me do this, why don't we, huh?
Anybody, can anybody do it Wednesday during the day?
I can, well, no, not that Wednesday, hang on. Is, yeah, that's our MPO stuff, right, Wayne? Yeah. Um, well, actually, it's the 20th, 13, 13, we're okay, special, oh, it's a special call MPO, okay. Well, let's do this, how about, do we have to decide right now? How about we send out an email? Because I don't, or, I don't know when else to do it.
Well, Thursday, what time would you think you would get here, Stuart? Thursday? No?
At 3:00.
How about we do it Thursday at 3:00? You said you couldn't do it?
It'd be, I mean, I may get here by 3:00, I can't guarantee it. I have something in Gallatin that morning, that may take all day, but...
Okay. Okay, let's go back...
Now, Wednesday, Wednesday during the day, afternoon, I'm free Wednesday afternoon, if, if, if that's a possibility.
Okay, well, it says the MPO is at 10, it is from 9:00 to 10:00. It's the special called MPO meeting from 9:00 to 10:00, so we could probably do it, I could do it in name.
Uh, let's just say, can we say 2, just to be safe?
Okay.
2, can we do 2?
No, that'll...
How about 1?
1.
18 weeks of vacation.
Okay.
I can do 1.
I can do 1.
Okay, 1's fine. So that's what we're going to do, Wednesday?
Wednesday, the 13th.
At 1:00. Boy!
Special meeting or a workshop?
Um, let's do it for it can be, um, uh, the special meeting for it could be televised.
I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about being able to decide. Workshops, we can't decide anything.
Yeah.
Special meetings, we can make a decision.
Okay.
Tom needs decisions.
Okay, let's do a special meeting. At 1:00, oh, well, that was easy. Okay, and there was one more, forgot what I was... Okay, we'll move on in just one second. Okay, was there anything else on that? So we'll move on. Okay.
Tom, you too.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I discuss and/or take action on hiring new city manager, and that is me. And so I wanted this back on the, um, agenda for we could just move forward. And there was some discussion about, um, what this committee would look like, and then what the process, um, would be. So, I'm kind of thinking, and we'll just throw it out there for, um, discussion, I'm thinking the, we should, the five commissioners could be on this committee, then we need four to five citizens, just to have, um, you know, expertise in different areas to help us go through the process. So that's what I'm forming a committee. Now, the other thing I wanted to discuss is, I know we talked about MTAS, um, gathering the information and doing the process, um, I know there was some reference that, that potentially, um, they, it's not MTAS that was the problem, but maybe they would like another representative, so I'm open for that discussion, too. So, um, I'll go ahead and let Commissioner Bissell.
I have any problem with MTAS acting as the, uh, coordinator per se, where they get the announcements out, uh, receive the applications, whatever, uh, but I don't think they should call out anybody. I think that they should provide... I think that they should provide us for all the applications and that the committee can do that.
Well, we can give them the qualification standards. If anybody doesn't meet that, they can call out. But other than that, as far as approval, we're kicking anybody else out.
I don't have any problem with that either. But it, their, their perform, their part is not to provide us with. Yeah. If they meet the standards, then they get passed on to the committee.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Crutcher.
Can I just ask that we take that step now? Like, let's get that part done? Get whatever qualifications, we can talk about that tonight. Get that to MTAS, go ahead and get that posted, and then we can assemble our committee, but we're not delaying that part of the process? Is that a possibility?
But I really wish I would've brought a, the job requirements for the city manager on the last bid. Can somebody get that for us? Tom, would you have that? Would you mind? I'm sorry, I didn't expect.
While they're doing that, and it may say the same thing as what I found.
Will you get us at least five copies or?
Do you have something else?
Well, it just, it may say the same thing that I found online, but I was looking at for other cities that had city managers' positions open, vacant, and what they had put in their qualifications. And most of them, I would say the overall majority of them have a minimum of a bachelor's degree in business administration or public administration or related field, preferably a master's degree. And then almost all of them had 10 years of municipal government experience with fi, at least five years at the department head or assistant city manager level. So I think those, and I don't know what this says, what we're about to see, but I think those are pretty, pretty standard and important.
I think ours was a pretty standard one, helped design by MTAS last time. So it was a pretty cookie cutter for what is required.
Do we need to post something while he's doing it? Something online as far as asking for volunteers or whatever? Or you just wanna pick 'em?
Well, I thought about it a couple of different ways. I mean, I thought about, we could take applications just like we would any other commission, and then we could come forward and, you know, vote on it. We could all, we could, you know, allow, like, me or, you know, or Mr., me and another commissioner or whatever, just seek out, take on the responsibility, call some citizens, you know, come up with five willing, or people that would be willing to do it. I don't know. I mean, however, it's not a committee, it's not gonna be a long lasting, so, I mean, I feel like we could probably just, you know, come up with some names.
Could we put out a call tonight for people that are interested in doing to contact? Whatever, some kind of request, resume, whatever they wanna do with it? And then possibly, cause we need to expedite this process. It's gonna take long enough as it is. And possibly during our special meeting, kinda make a decision on that, that night as well. So we can start forming the committee to meet that right away.
I like the idea of throwing the committee final vote on the.
Special meeting.
Special meeting unless y'all, you know.
So can we put that, y'all, take, put it out there to interested parties that would be interested in?
I mean, I'd be willing to take on the responsibility of contacting people if you wanna go that route, like, I know, but if you would rather just take the applications, review, you know, that's up to.
Well, I'd like to just open it up into people, cause you never know who you're gonna get. Make somebody super at it. Not saying that the ones we might pick off that we know wouldn't be, but there may be people out there we don't know that are very well qualified for something like this. So like, did that and ask them to respond between now and whenever that was. They can do it through an email if they want, as far as I'm concerned.
So we can put something on, like a public announcement on the website? Put it on Facebook? Put it, I don't.
As you usually advertise, rec center and out here in the.
Yeah.
Hall, the library, the post office.
That's what I would suggest, but, no.
Okay, I like that. So, final number, are we okay with doing five of us and five citizens?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could suggest, wouldn't you wanna do an odd number so you wouldn't get a tie vote on somebody?
Five and four.
Well, we could do five and four.
Yeah, that way you probably wouldn't end up with a tie.
They're not gonna be, they're not gonna be voting on it because it's gonna be.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I like it right.
There's not gonna be a vote on some type, wouldn't make any difference on this.
All right, that's, that's fine. I thought you made.
I mean, that's a valid point, but we're just ranking them and.
I don't know if your, your committee was gonna take a vote to recommend to the board. I realize the board would have the final vote, but if they're not gonna vote, if it's gonna offer comments, then ten's fine.
But I don't want to, only thing I would request, I don't wanna rush the application process, not for the citizens, but for the applicants. So a fair, yeah, a fair amount of time to be open. You know, most cities you see it's 30 days or something. I don't know.
I think that's fair.
You know.
There's, there's people, I've been discussing with somebody, I can't remember who it was before, the people that are looking for a job that have these qualifications, they're looking online for who's posting these positions and where they going for it. You know, they Google in city manager and boom, it pops up, they're gonna be a lot of applications.
You're right. You're right. Well, and here's another thing. I think, well, let's talk about the masters versus, you know, somebody, and I think, I don't know how we worded it last time, but I do think if somebody has 20 years of experience but has a bachelor's degree, they shouldn't be Xed out because we put master. So I wanna make sure the wording's correct. Because so many times, we may have candidates come through and they're younger and they have their masters in something, but they're, they don't have the experience and we're used as a stepping stone for their next promotion. And I really would like somebody to come and invest. Now, I don't wanna be there writing out for the retirement either, but I do think that we, when we box ourself in, that we could say masters preferred but equivalent experience or just make sure it's worded.
That's what they said.
Yeah.
It said preferred and then it, you know, and I think it said, let's see, how did it say it? Or with equivalent experience.
Okay. Sorry about that, Tom. I know that was last minute, so.
Well, I think we don't need to limit the public administration degree. I think you need to add business administration in there or a, or a related field instead of limiting just public administration. But the key, even to me, more important than the degree, I think. I mean, the degree, I think a bachelor's degree should be the minimum requirement, but even more important than a master's is five years of supervisory experience dealing with the public, buzzing administration or any equivalent combination of education. I mean, the, any equivalent, that's fine, but I, this is the CEO. This is the highest position in the city. I mean, I, I think that that person needs to have had 10 years of experience, minimum. Again, five, at least five of which was as a department head within a municipality or a government type setting or as the assistancy manager. I really think we need somebody with some experience as a, you know, in municipal government because it's a different beast.
So you're gonna exclude anybody in county or state government?
Well, no, I think, I didn't mean it like that. I think I said, or other governments. That's what I meant to say. I didn't say that. No, just somebody that's been in the, you know, public government type work, not. In other words, just saying something as vague as dealing with the public, well, that could be anybody.
The last card I've heard much says what you're talking about.
Yeah.
You would, in what you're saying, you would want to eliminate a retired CEO of a Fortune 500 company?
Well, I mean, I think we'd have to look at that as equivalent experience. I mean, preferably, my preference would be being a, being a CEO of a Fortune 500 company may not be the equivalent of being a CEO of a, of a government, a city government. I'm just telling you. I mean, this is a different animal. So I don't know that that person would necessarily understand. I don't understand it, to be honest with you, fully, the government aspect of it. I mean, I run a private business. I mean, I understand revenue and expenses and, but, but there's parts of government that, that I can't wrap my mind around in terms of how things operate. Not because I don't have the intellectual ability to, I just, it doesn't work that way in the private sector. That's all I'm saying.
But you could be the president of the governor and not have a college degree period. Absolutely, 100%.
Well, sure you can. By constitution, you can. It's not a requirement constitutionally to be in those positions. But that's something that's elected by, you're, you're elected to that position, and if you, you don't have the qualifications, then maybe you'll get elected, maybe you won't. But it's, it's vetted by the public at large and not, it's different. I don't think you're comparing the same thing.
Well, I, I kinda, I'm sorry. I kinda hate to, I agree, you know, ideally, somebody with 10 years' experience would bring more to the table necessarily than, you know, someone with five. But I think when you start stretching that high, you're cutting yourself out. I'd rather have a minimum and then us be able to weed through what experience is more important to us. I agree, five years is, you know, supervisory positions is probably not enough, but, you know, 10 years seems, you know.
I'm not so stuck, stuck over 10 years as I am just the vagueness of supervisory experience dealing with the public, buzzing, minister. That could be anybody. I mean, that could, you know.
Taxman.
That, that could be absolutely anybody. I mean, I, the five or 10, I'm not concerned about. I just want it to be, I prefer that it be experience in a government setting. That's all I'm saying.
Municipality.
Well, I don't wanna limit it to municipality because I think, Stuart's right. I don't, I mean, I think you could look at county or state level folks too.
Are we agreed on? You gonna say five years plus your bachelor?
Or you could do eight?
Five to 10. Five to 10.
Say five to 10.
I don't think any, any number you put on there is gonna matter because when it says or any equivalent combination.
Yeah.
Then it's gonna take care of whether it's five years, four years, or 20 years.
Sure.
So us putting a number on it is irrelevant.
Well, it gives a standard for applicants to, that are, that are considering putting in a, sending their resume or to.
I went to work last year and got promoted. You've got a year, that's not. I know what you're trying to say. If you really, if you really wanted the job, I wouldn't let not having one of those keep me from putting in an application.
I, I think the use of the word preferred is important. In other words, graduation from a four university of recognized standing with a bachelor's degree in any area of public administration, I, I think that should be reworded as, as Commissioner Crutcher mentioned, public administration, accounting, business administration, that sort of thing, and a minimum of five years of upper level supervisory experience. And that, I don't, you know, let's just deal with the elephant here. Either we want a degree or we don't want a degree. And when you put or in any equivalent experience, you give the option for no degree. And I think we just, we need to decide.
What you're saying is if we say a degree, we couldn't have Bill Gates. We have.
I'd wanna know why Bill Gates wanted to be city manager in the city of Fairview. He could just buy it and then do what he wanted to.
We had this discussion before, a while back, about the people that are running great companies and none of them have a college degree. So, you know, that's one thing you have to consider. You could, I think I gave off 20 people the last time that were CEOs of companies, a big corporation, that, that doesn't have it. So you gotta figure out what you want. You want it or you don't want it.
Well, I, I don't.
There's people out there that can do a fantastic job that don't have one. Absolutely, without question.
I, I think, and I have close friends that don't have degrees that are exceptional people, but if we're looking for the future, especially since we're moving to the environment that a college education, at least two years of it, is going to be free. I think that in order to remain competitive in the standard, I think that, that that's a reasonable request for, for someone to be our chief executive officer.
Unless Bernie Sanders gets elected, then it's all free. That's what he said.
That's what he says. You, you're not gonna have to worry about our little piddle and tax rate if Bernie Sanders gets elected. Cause you, you're basically just gonna send in everything you make and don't worry about it. The, the bottom line is, I mean, I'll take a stab at it if that's okay or, you know, to write up a, a standard. I, I don't think you, I understand what you're saying, but I also think that, you know, all of, a lot of our positions should, we should be more formal about that. I mean, I, I don't, and Chief Harris may take me out back and shoot me after this, but I, I, I get it when we hire police officers, but if you look at the qualifications for other police departments, they all gotta have 60 hours' worth of college. Very few police departments now don't require some formal education. And, and it's because the world is moving past that. When we were all coming up, college was not, I mean, it was great if you could go, but there were a lot of people that couldn't go to college. So the standard was a high school education. When you look out there now, the people coming up, the standard is no longer a high school education. Everybody goes to college. And so if we're looking to the future, then we ought to be looking at, at what the future holds, not necessarily the exceptional person to pass. But if Bill Gates applies, I'd be willing to vote to make an exception.
But my point was, my point was, there's lots of people out here that are super successful people in business that have all the knowledge.
I, I can't argue with that and would not argue with that.
And if they are, they don't wanna be city manager of Fairview. That's the reverse of that.
But it's just not, that's the only thing in the world that matters.
It's not the only thing in the world that matters, but there is, there is, and maybe.
I agree, that should have a bachelor's degree.
My, my, and it's my bias, I guess, because I, I did achieve a degree, but I do think it, it is, it taught me things. It, it gave me additional information I wouldn't have if I didn't have it.
Well, and I, I do think you're right. I think we're in the way, and if we wanna get a certain quality people to apply, that you need to have. And I would like master preferred. Doesn't mean that people, we're not gonna look at people that don't have masters, but I think we should put some value on, you know, the potential of having a masters.
We, we struggle with this every time we hire a city manager, and maybe we, something we ought to talk about, I don't necessarily have to agree in tonight, but if I'm an applicant for this job, I also wanna know a couple of things. I wanna know what the salary range is, and I wanna know if spending expenses are going to be paid. And.
Well, if you're gonna require all these degrees, you better be paying 120,000 a year.
Not necessarily.
Well, no, you can get some jackleg that has a degree that can't sign the job. You're right. You're exactly right.
Yeah, I disagree with you, but that's fine.
Well, I think that as we go, I mean, I don't know if we have to decide tonight about moving expenses. I, I think if we get the general description and before, when are we looking at? when are we looking at, if, well, M-TAS, they'll give us a draft, we can-
I'm, I'm going to, I'll do the qualifications things, and you'll have it by cause of business tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'll send you my draft of this, that's, that's not, and then you, it'd just be, everybody's sending in their input, I guess, to you, Mayor, and you make the final decision, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, well, last time we did use M-TAS to help formulate this, so if we want to do the changes and send that, and contact somebody from M-TAS, and move forward that way, then we can go ahead and get this posted. So that's fine, if everybody else is good with him working on something. And then, so I guess we need to get a motion on the committee. And was there something else that was? That we put it in the special meeting? Okay, so we'll make a motion to start accepting applications from citi- citizens to be voted on at the special meeting, which is next Thursday?
Are they required to have a degree?
No.
Why not?
They need, they are required to have experience, some kind of hiring or management experience, I would think would be the qualification.
For a government position, correct?
No.
Not going to require them to have the government experience?
It'd be nice, we could put that, yeah.
A high government position, as y'all said?
Are you having entertainment, just for fun, or are you really concerned about this?
If we're, if we're going to be serious about hiring somebody that will require them to have a college degree, that surely the people, the citizens that will be making the decision, will have a college degree in a governmental field, and have had been in management and hiring in that position, or would not even be considered for the committee?
I, I would, I would, if I might, I would disagree with that. The purpose of having the committee is to have different points of view, and that the person on the committee is not going to be charged with running the city, the person on the committee is going to be charged with providing input as to whether or not they, as a citizen, could work with this type of chief executive in the city. I don't think it has anything, if you have, if you have everybody that's going to be involved in the process, coming from the same point of view, you might as well not even have the process, you might as well just be unilateral, based upon a numerical figuring.
Well, that sounds like a government speaking. So down about that. Mayor, why don't we do this, why don't we open it up to five eighteen-year-olds from the high school, and get tools involved? They are vote, they are voters, they are citizens in our city, and why don't we let them be on the committee?
Are you making a motion for that?
I'm making that motion.
Does anybody have a second?
Down in the world, could we be against eighteen-year-olds in our, in our city that want to make a difference in our city?
Okay, well, anybody second that motion? Okay, so I think we probably need to go, I mean, I understand you're, you know, maybe you don't like the discussion, or you're not agreeance with a degree, and we can take that to a vote, you know, we can take that to a vote if somebody thinks that's necessary. Do we have any other where we want to go? Okay.
If I could say one thing on that, eighteen-year-olds, if they're eighteen-year-olds, oh, they're all welcome to submit an application to be on the committee. You agree?
Yeah, I don't think we're excluding anyone from being on the committee.
That's all I got.
Huh?
That's all I got.
I don't think we're-
Don't want to get into age discrimination.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're excluding anyone, but I, I don't, I also don't think that the, the five citizen members have to mirror the type of person that we're seeking. I think that's not the input we're seeking.
We're with you.
There's a motion on the floor to?
I, yeah, I had an original.
Okay, and we have a second?
I don't know about that.
Second, do we do now?
Okay, so we got a first and second, and the original motion was to proceed with taking applications from a committee, or to form a committee, and that the city manager would make sure that got posted, and then we would have our, add that to the agenda in the special meeting, so.
And move forward with the information from M-TAS?
Yes, ASAP. Which they, well, they're going to help formulate that, so they'll, they'll have it.
Okay, well, we'll add that to the motion, if you want to keep that.
Who's going to be the point of contact for M-TAS from the city, will it be Brandy?
Okay.
Mayor, are you going to appoint those at the special meeting, or are you just going to vote to, to start the process there?
We're voting to start, that we'll appoint them at the special meeting, so, and we, we want, will we require them to be there, I mean, it's a weird time, yeah.
That's my next question, because normally committees, we require them to be there. If you want to suspend the rules, that needs to be in your motion.
We need to suspend the rules, because it's at one o'clock in the afternoon.
Sorry to interrupt, but, you know, normally committees have to be there, and if they're, if you're not going to do that, we need that in the motion to suspend the rule.
Okay. So we'll have to make that motion at the special meeting, or now?
No, you can do it now.
Okay, so can I add that to that original? Yeah, a motion? And if we're still good with the second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That would bring us to item eleven, city manager's item for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners, just got one thing, we've been talking a lot about grants lately. One of the emails that I got from the MPO a few weeks ago, when we were applying for that sidewalk grant, was that the history of Fairview of not completing grants. So I just want to kind of iterate that completing these three grants that we are about to complete is going to help us in the future with T-DOT, because they've already stood up and took notice and thanking us every time we comply with what we're doing. So I'd just like to see that continued, because there is other areas in this town that we need grants for, especially some of our collector roads, such as Chester, Horn Tavern, Old Franklin, et cetera, that really could use a resurfacing. But I'd like to see that area continued, when we do apply for a grant, try to, in every, every way, to complete it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, I have three things, and if I can read my writing here, so I wouldn't forget it, it's bad if you write it down where you won't forget it, and then can't read your writing, but I have deciphered it, I'll make it brief. First one is, and this is for information for the board, the lawsuit that was, I have received information that the lawsuit that was filed against the city, and three of its employees, two in their official capacity, and one as an individual, has been dismissed with prejudice, which for Commissioner Crutcher already knows, but for the benefit of the ones that are not lawyers, that means they can't re-bring the action. They were settled and dismissed. I have filed a motion in the Holland Paving Company lawsuit against the city involving some paving, that they're trying to get us to act as surety for, I filed a motion to dismiss that for failure to state a claim for, and which relief can be granted. That motion will be heard on the twelfth of May of this year. The last thing is, Ms. Brandy advised me that we, the city has been advised, that our request to revise the charter relative to term limits, and, and, what was the other one, the?
The number-
The number of people on the, balancing up the number of, excuse me, balancing up the number of members of the board on the election, so you'd have two commissioners, two commissioners and the mayor separate, that will not be taken up at this session of the legislature, this is an election year, they had gone home early, the mayor may not have made it if they'd stayed till the middle of May, but that will be considered at the next session, which I guess will be this fall. Sorry, I broke that down, and I didn't have the thing there about it, and then I couldn't, I couldn't speak, and that's unusual for me. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bessel.
I don't have anything, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Crutcher?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, well, I don't have anything tonight, except, thank you for everybody that held in there, and we'll see you next Thursday night. We get a motion? Okay. Oh, Wednesday at one, I'm sorry, Wednesday at one, I already forgot.